I would like to note that the interpreter for this evening is Ashley Arsenega. Ms. Arsenega, would you mind raising your hand? Ask her for a listening device if you would like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de antepresión para esta junta. La señora Arsenega está sentada atrás. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of June 3, 2025. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aglera Hernandez, Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Mayor Potam Escobedo.
Here.
Mayor Patino.
Here.
So, City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you please give the closed session report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, with respect to item three. A very positive evaluation was provided by the City Council to the City Attorney and the City Manager. And we are very grateful and delighted to continue to serve the city here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have the privilege of reading our first proclamation. Whereas President Harry S. Truman signed into law the Integration Act on June 12, 1948, enabling women to serve as permanent, regular members of the Army, Marine Corps, Navy, and Air Force. Women veterans are one of the fastest-growing demographics within the United States military and are expected to reach nearly 20% of the veteran population by 2045. And whereas she raised her hand, a collaborative initiative was formed in Santa Barbara County to provide opportunities for women veterans in Santa Barbara County to find community, purpose, and strengths in their identity as veterans. And whereas Santa Barbara County is home to women veterans who have served our country with honor and dignity, often in dangerous situations, including service in World War II through the current conflicts. And whereas, through their selfless sacrifice, courage, dedication, and honorable military service, women veterans have safeguarded our heritage and freedom while providing valuable service and expertise to our society. Women veterans have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also at the forefront of numerous major progressive social change movements in history, paving the way for future generations to enjoy the unaliable rights, duties, and responsibilities afforded equality to all residents of the United States of America. And whereas each woman veteran is extraordinary to her own way, proving that women working inside the home or outside in academia, science, technology, business, labor, governance, and more maintain critical roles in every sphere of society. And whereas is committed to supporting and recognizing the bravery of all women veterans, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice and laid down their lives to protect our state and country. Now therefore, I, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaim June 12, 2025, as Women Veterans Day in the City of Santa Maria and encourage all residents to honor the courage, service, and sacrifice of women veterans and recognize their vital contributions to our nation and our community. And not only did these women veterans be willing to serve, they serve when they come home. We see them in our community at different levels. And that's just the way they are. Thank you. And here to receive it is Kate Ferguson, a fellow Rotarian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council? Thank you for this recognition. While women have served in the American military since before we came a nation, they were not officially recognized as military members or veterans until 1948. Women were originally relegated to serving in the civilian fields of nursing, laundering, mending clothes, and cooking. Despite this segregation, many served in war zones alongside their male compatriots, and some even dressed as men during the Civil War and fought on the front lines. Throughout the years, women's roles have continued to grow in all branches and phases of the military operations. Today, women make up 20% of the new recruits, 16% of personnel serving on active duty, and 19% of the National Guard and Reserves. From the American Revolution times to women currently serving in the field, women have proudly served our nation. Yet many female veterans still do not identify themselves as a veteran, do not seek care at the VA, and are often overlooked as veterans in our own communities. Through recognizing this day for women veterans, you're following the efforts of the states and cities around the country to engage with and advocate for women veterans. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask my fellow women veterans to stand and be recognized, please.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Flores?
I just want to congratulate you and thank you for coming home. And my husband is a Vietnam veteran, and he would tell me stories of the women that would just give selflessly while they were on duty there. Not going to, not eating sometimes, working, helping, taking care of the veterans. And I'm so grateful for your lives that you're home today. Thank you for your service.
And the next proclamation would be presented by Councilmember Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is with great honor and pride that I present the LGBTQ+ Pride Month proclamation on behalf of the City of Santa Maria. Whereas the City of Santa Maria has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and more LGBTQ+ community and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people. And whereas many residents who contribute to the enrichment of Santa Maria are part of this LGBTQ+ community. And whereas significant advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of LGBTQ+ persons throughout the nation and around the world. And it is important for cities like Santa Maria to stand up and show up and support residents of the LGBTQ+ community. And whereas June is recognized as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in many cities across the United States and has become a symbolic month in which the LGBTQ+ community and its supporters come together in various celebrations of pride to commemorate the Stonewall riots when LGBTQ+ people rose up and fought against discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas in the movement towards equal rights for LGBTQ+, the LGBTQ+ community, the city celebrates their resilience and their hard-won victories to advance acceptance and equality. Now therefore, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the month of June, 2025, as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Santa Maria and urges all residents and businesses to respect the entire community and build a culture that strives for equity and equality for all people. And here to accept the proclamation is the Executive Director of House of Pride and Equality, Suzette Lopez.
I didn't know what order we did things in. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Suzette Lopez, Executive Director of House of Pride and Equality. On behalf of Hope, I want to thank you for this Pride proclamation. It's a powerful gesture of inclusion, and we're deeply grateful for the City of Santa Maria's support in uplifting the LGBTQ+ community. I also want to extend our heartfelt congratulations and sincere thanks to the Santa Maria Women Veterans, who are receiving a well-deserved proclamation of their own tonight. Because of your service and sacrifice, we have the freedom to live openly, love fully, and show up in the world as our most authentic selves. Santa Maria Pride is a celebration of visibility, joy, and community, and is also a call to continue working towards equality and understanding. We are honored to invite you and the community at large to join us on June 8 for Santa Maria Pride. We're especially thrilled that elected officials from surrounding cities have already committed to being there and sharing a few words. It would mean the world to us if the Santa Maria City Council members represented us well. Thank you again for standing with us and for helping make Santa Maria a more inclusive and welcoming place for all. Buenas noches. Lo voy a decir en español también. Buenas noches, alcalde y miembros del Consejo Municipal. Mi nombre es Suzette Lopez, y soy Executive Director of House of Pride and Equality. En nombre de House of Pride and Equality, gracias por esta proclamación del mes de orgullo. Es un gusto poderoso que reafirma, un gesto poderoso que reafirma el compromiso de Santa María con la inclusión y la visibilidad. También felicitamos y agradecemos a las veteranas de Santa María. Gracias a su servicio tenemos la libertad de vivir auténticamente. En una época en que los derechos de la comunidad LGBTQ y los derechos de las mujeres están siendo atacados, su valentía continúa inspirándonos y protegiéndonos a todos. Al celebrar el orgullo, recordamos que el primer orgullo fue una protesta, lidiada por quien valientemente exigieron justicia y dignidad. Ese espíritu vive en todo lo que hacemos. Los invitamos a acompañarnos el 8 de junio en Santa Maria Pride. Líderes de la ciudad cercana estarán presentes, y sería muy importante contar con la representación de líderes de nuestra propia ciudad. Gracias nuevamente por este reconocimiento y por su apoyo.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation on Measure U Youth Services to be made by Assistant City Manager Wu.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a brief presentation on how we spend Measure U dollars on youth services. We brought a presentation to the council a couple months ago regarding Measure U, and as you're aware, 90% of Measure U dollars goes towards public safety, 5% goes towards youth, and 5% goes towards quality of life. This chart simply shows that we've been trying to adhere to those distribution. And for youth services, we spent 5.6% of the Measure U dollars. And this equates to about 1.7 million. This is fiscal year 2324. And this money is, for the most, are split between Recreation and Parks and the Library. So in the next couple of slides, I'm going to highlight how this money is spent through the Recreation and Parks Departments and the Library. And we do have representatives from Recreation and Parks, Dennis Smithman, and we also have Selena from the Library, and they'll get a chance to just say a few things after I wrap up. So youth services for Recreation and Parks is primarily spent on staffing and services, including the Able Maldonado Community Youth Center for the implementation of our youth and teen programs. The youth center, just down the street from here, includes Multimedia Lab, Music and Media Room, Arts and Crafts Room, Exercise Room, and a market that offers job training and career building opportunities. So if you've ever been down there, it really has a little bit of everything that gives our youth and teens additional services to learn, to be supported in their work, to be engaged in meaningful experiences that contribute to their overall well-being. Some highlights of youth and teen programs include sports and fitness, junior golf clinics, pickleball clinics, other activities such as gardening, yoga, and other events and workshops. There's, we also have leadership programs that are provided, Key Club, Mayor's Youth Task Force, the Chick-fil-A Leadership Program, STEAM, and CERT. The Library also provides a wide range of programs and services to support our young And this includes, for our younger children, storytime, for babies and preschoolers, homework assistance, but also clubs for our school age children that support learning and literacy. Our teen programs also include visits to our junior high schools, our Anime Club, and other social engagement through art and reading. You are likely aware of the Bookmobile that travels to many different locations, many of our schools, and they participate in different festivals, literacy nights, and parent nights in partnership with the local organizations. And we, the Library has had many, many visitors. It's served many patrons for children of all ages. This concludes my presentation, but I do want to give some time for Dennis and Selena to just talk about Measure U and how that's benefited their departments.
Good evening, Mr. Smithen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you. I'd like to share with you just some numbers going through the report process. In 2024, the Recreation and Parks Department served over 2,900 teens at the youth center. Those are duplicated numbers, so individual numbers are 1,185 unique users to the center. We're open six days a week, up until 8 o'clock, making sure that these kids have a safe place to go after school. We provide lots of great activities with lots of caring staff, who are not only there just leading, but also being great mentors and developing relationships with these teens, so these teens know that they have someone that cares for them. A lot of the times, our staff are recognized throughout the community and always appreciated at our events, and teens coming up to them and wanting to hang out with them. We have some pretty cool staff, so. In addition to those activities, we do provide a lot of other activities, including field trips, different programs throughout the area, from here to Santa Barbara, horseback riding and whale watching, all sorts of activities with assistance through Measure U, but also some additional grant funding that we've had over the last couple of years.
For the Library, just to follow up with what Sean said, we focus on early learning at the Library. So we have, Measure U specifically helps fund for baby storytime, bilingual toddler storytime, preschool storytime, also our Homework Help, so that's Monday through Thursday up through 6th grade. You saw in one of the pictures recently, we have a large age range that comes to Homework Help. So we had, in the picture, we had a pre-K that was learning how to work on these letters. And then we also had 4th grade and 6th grade there, so working on different things, science, sometimes reading. We offer a wide variety of things for up through 6th grade. We also have clubs for school age kids. We have a Spanish club, Pokemon club, sewing and Lego clubs are also very popular, really helping with the socialization and also bringing literacy into the different aspects of the clubs also, so that they're really popular. We've got a core group of kids that like to rotate through, so it's really nice to see, just like they do at Rec and Parks. Teen programming, it's really social engagement through art and through reading, so we've got different programs, anime, we've got different manga collections that they go through. They also watch some different anime, and then they also create some art while they're there, too. So we usually have that program once a month, and that's extremely popular with our teens. And then for Bookmobile, we are out on Bookmobile four to five days a week, depending on what events are happening out in the community. So during the week, we have a course schedule. We're at different parks, some senior centers, some schools. And then, as mentioned, we do festivals at most of the Bonita School Districts, usually in fall and then in spring. Most recently, we were at, and literacy evenings, too. We were at Rice and Adams, Oakley, Fairlon, Battles and Tunnel. Within the last month, we were at all of those locations, so we're definitely making the rounds throughout the community schools. The next event for the Bookmobile that everyone's welcome to will be at Downtown Friday Nights on the 13th and on the 20th. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the council?
Sure. I'll ask a few questions.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you. My question is, how are youth involved in co-creating some of the programs or in giving feedback of the programs that are being offered by the city?
I'm going to direct that question to department representatives.
Thank you, Councilmember Soto. Currently, we are completing a five-year Leisure Needs Assessment, and we've done this for many, many years. We go out to the community and ask them what they're interested in, what their teens are interested in. This year, we had over 1,000 respondents to our survey, and we will be bringing that to you in July. But the news is really great. Teens were highly involved in this survey. We did target markets to teens in some of our areas to specifically ask what they were interested in, not only in the youth center, but throughout the city and our other programming and events and activities. So we'll be bringing that to you in July to show you the results of that. But our planning is primarily driven by that Leisure Needs Assessment that happens every five years.
Okay.
Thank you.
And when that Leisure Needs Assessment is complete and we get that report, will you give us a breakdown of the demographics of those who completed it?
Yes, I'm very excited to show you the demographics. Our outreach coordinator really strived to make sure that the entire community was involved. She attended and passed out surveys from some of our local, our typical events, but she also spent time outside of a barber shop and a laundromat and vierta and really tried to make sure that we were incorporating the entire community. And the demographics are quite strong, and we're really proud of that.
In your opinion, what are some gaps or limitations in terms of the programs that we are offering at this moment when it comes to reaching or tailoring our programs to, like, underserved young people and their families? So I guess my question is, like, we have limitations, obviously, because of budget constraints, but I'm curious to hear your thoughts on what those limitations are. If money wasn't in, what are those limitations in terms of the programs that, the program offerings that we have at the city?
Yeah, currently, one of the biggest gaps is we're working on an age group that we may not see at the Library or the youth center, and that's getting them more involved, really that 5th and 6th grader. At that time, you know, morals and characters and values are still being developed, and we have the opportunity really strongly to make sure they're going down the right path. And by providing those caring adults in those programs, we're able to do that. So we'll be focusing, I may have had a sneak peek at the report, but we'll be focusing some of our attention on getting more of those 5th and 6th graders involved into our program areas before they can make some of those wrong life choices.
Great. And I mean, I'm looking at some of the numbers here that were provided in the report in terms of the number of young people served through the Rec and Parks Department and the library services, which is fantastic. And I'm also looking simultaneously at the number of young people under the age of 18 in the City of Santa Maria, and we're a very young city. Over 30% of our residents are under the age of 18, and I would love for our budget to be more reflective of creating programs that serve that large population within our city. So that's more of a comment, not so much a question.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to make a few comments on the Mayor's Youth Task Force. The first semester will go to Northern California, the second semester will go to Southern California. So we've covered UC Fullerton, Caltech, UCLA, SC, Stanford, Berkeley, Santa Clara, San Jose State, Santa Cruz, Irvine, Riverside, and Cal Poly. And so I ask the kids, where would you like to go? And then we can, we arrange the trips around where they want to go. But not only do we go to the universities, we want to make it a real positive experience. So we've been to the Legion of Art up in Northern California, we've been to the Broad Museum, and it seems like almost every year we get to the Getty Museum. We've gone to Museum of Tolerance down in Los Angeles, Orange County Museum of Art, Riverside Museum of Art, and Chich Morin has a center for Chicano and art down in Riverside, and we've hit that. So we try to include all that. And when we have dinner at night, there's no cell phones, and the kids know that. And I said, I can't tell you, but I can ask you. And their memory's pretty good, they don't even pull the cell phones out. So, but I really want to stress with them about giving back to the community, and so we do that with Serve Santa Maria. And we've also have put the flags out for Memorial Day at the cemetery. And I know that we had a girls' defense class that they just really liked. And I asked the kids in the Mayor's Youth Task Force, what would you like, what would you like us to do better at the Able Maldonado Center? A lot of times when we go into these schools, they don't even know that they can belong to the Maldonado Center. And so we tell them, you know, they can, and all the resources that are there. So what we've done is usually around finals time, they want to be able to go to the library, and then they want to be able to go across the Maldonado Center and just take a break. And we have cookies and we have soft drinks for them so they can take a break and relax. They seem to think they need to relax. So anyway, and then they'll go back and study. But it's been, I think, very, very positive. I had a woman come up to me in the grocery store, and I really like to tell this story, and she was practically, she was practically in tears because during COVID, when everything was so locked down and the kids weren't able to really mingle a lot and they weren't in school, we took them down south. And she said, her daughter and her daughter's friends were so depressed, and when they came home, she said, it was just like night and day, they were so happy. And she was worrying about her daughter and the mental health impact that this had on our kids. And we all know that, anyone that has kids knows what that did to our children. So there's just been a lot of positive experiences for these kids, so I think it's been money well spent. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, just wanted to recognize the work of both of those departments, too. I've participated in many of your guys' events. I've seen you guys and how you treat people as well, and you know, the customer service is a priority. And I like the fact that you guys are changing some of the activities. that you guys are changing some of the activities, kind of adapting, trying new things. That's, I think that's important to cater to. That's why I'm looking forward for that report, to really cater and adapt ourselves to the customers. And, yeah, I think it's particularly the Bookmobile. I've seen it. You guys have been putting some miles on it. I'm glad. And I think that books have been one of the best things that have happened to me, particularly, and just can change people's life. And definitely, I, you know, looking at the numbers, the older, the older ages, I think that sometimes we're very focused on the kiddos and the younger generations, but the ones that sometimes needs the more of our attention are the ones that are changing and going through that transition to adulthood and becoming teenagers. So hopefully, we can keep working on attracting and engaging them and trying to find new ways of what they really want and how we can get them, get them up there instead of on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Soto?
Yes, I really appreciate you giving that, that update, Madam Mayor. And that sparked another question for me, and that was like, what do our partnerships with some of our local nonprofit organizations look like? Because I heard you talk about university seminars, and I know that there's some nonprofits in the area that offer university seminars, whether it's a one-day or overnight trip. And so I'm just curious if there would be any way for there to be a partnership between the city and these nonprofits to increase the number of participants perhaps, or to not duplicate efforts?
Absolutely. We're definitely not interested in duplicating efforts. We work very closely with nonprofits, including the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and many, many others here in the community. We really encourage to get these kids out to these trips, these college trips, to give back through community service, whether it's through the city or working with some of these nonprofits. We have close ties, again, with healthcare, education, and other recreation programs on a daily basis. So we do advertise for them. We let them host in our community centers. We share the information not only with our teens, but with our seniors, and with our families as well. So we do help get the word out. We recognize that they do provide an amazing service in our community and definitely don't try to compete with that.
So if a nonprofit reached out and said, hey, we're hosting this university seminar, does the city want to partner with us and the Mayor's Youth Task Force to host it? Is that something that the city would be open to exploring?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And then my, my, my last question, I promise, is I recently heard, I was on a walk with someone today, and I heard that the, it's a program through Allen Hancock College. It's like an internship program, student corp.
Yeah, so we are in the infancy, infancy stage, and the CEO did report to council, I believe it was last month, about this upcoming program. We'll be working with Allen Hancock College and the Chamber of Commerce to really hit the ground running in the recreation and leisure services field. Now, this does have the possibility to branch out in other areas, but much like the academy is a pipeline to the police department, we're looking to use Allen Hancock's recreation program as a pipeline to recreation and park staff. So it's a way to get them involved, really understand what recreation and parks is all about and the important service that the department offers to the community, and really get those, those young adults into, into service and to working with the city eventually.
Yeah, that's great. And I bring this up because my organization is a host site for college corps, and I heard rumors that that program may not be continuing or maybe transferring to the state. And so I'm just, I think as part of the role that the city, I would love to see the city kind of play a role of, of being able to, to offer like direct internship opportunities to, to young people to kind of fill that gap and still be able to have a pipeline into, you know, the public sector, the private sector, nonprofit agencies, and, and support, support young professionals in that, in that manner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next presentation is the 2024 Annual Police Report, and that is to be made by Commander Dan Cohen.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Santa Maria Police Department's 2024 Annual Report. This report reflects more than numbers. It highlights the daily dedication and hard work of the men and women who serve this community. Over the past year, we've focused on reducing crime, strengthening partnerships, and modernizing how we serve, all while staying true to our core values of service, professionalism, and accountability. Tonight, I'll share a summary of our key accomplishments. The Santa Maria Police Department serves a growing city of over 110,000 residents across 23 and a half square miles. We are a full-service agency committed to community-based and constitutionally grounded policing. Thanks to the city council's continued support and funding through Measure U, the department operates on an annual budget of approximately $55 million, supporting 140 sworn officers and 60 professional staff. We take this investment seriously, and we are committed to delivering results. Our mission is to protect and serve through partnerships built on trust and respect. From patrol and investigations to school safety and special operations, every member of our team contributes to a safer, stronger community. We don't just enforce laws, we build relationships. We don't just respond to crime, we work to prevent it. Every emergency and call for help begins in our communication center. In 2024, our dispatchers managed over 197,000 calls, resulting in 130,000 calls for service across multiple agencies. Each call represents someone in need, and our dispatchers are often the first voice they hear. The center operates 24/7, providing dispatch services not only for SMPD, but also for Santa Maria and Guadalupe Fire, Guadalupe PD, our City Rangers, our Code Enforcement, and the Allen Hancock College Police Department. This level of coordination requires skill, composure.
Excuse me, Commander Cohen. Mr. Escobedo has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry for the interruption. When you mentioned that Guadalupe PD, you're saying that Guadalupe Police Department is, we receive on our system their emergency calls, and then we direct those to the, how does that work? Is it triangulation? How?
All 911 calls from the city of Guadalupe come to the Santa Maria Police Department Communication Center. Our dispatchers handle those calls and directly dispatch over the radio the Guadalupe police officer so they can respond to the emergency. We have a contract with them for services.
Gotcha. Thank you.
When most people, when most people think of the police, they picture officers on the streets, and rightly so. Our Operations Division, made up of patrol and traffic bureaus, is the most visible and far-reaching part of the department. These teams are on the front lines every day, responding to calls and proactively working to reduce crime. In 2024, our patrol team, including 60 officers, 11 sergeants, and four lieutenants, responded to 91,335 calls for service, generated over 17,500 police reports, made over 3,784 arrests, covering everything from crimes in progress to welfare checks and suspicious activity. Our traffic bureau, with five motors and one supervisor, focused on roadway safety. They issued 6,491 citations, investigated 100, I'm sorry, 1,844 traffic collisions. 362 of those resulted in injuries, and unfortunately, eight of them involved fatalities. Whether responding to emergencies or engaging in prevention, these officers are the backbone of public safety in Santa Maria. Behind every arrest or emergency response is a team of professionals working around the clock to support our operations. In 2024, our detective bureau investigated 1,361 cases. They submitted 730 to the district attorney for prosecution and conducted over 100 special investigative operations. The crime lab processed more than 23,000 fingerprints, hundreds of shell casings, 112 firearms, and 55 vehicles, while the property and evidence unit managed thousands of critical pieces of evidence. Our records bureau handled over 17,500 reports and thousands of public requests. Though often behind the scenes, these teams are essential to our success. Training is the foundation of effective, accountable policing. In 2024, SMPD logged 9,165 training hours, a 23% increase over the previous year. Officers received updated instruction in de-escalation, tactical medicine, use of force, crisis intervention, and active attacker response. We also expanded our web-based training software platform, improving efficiency and enhancing our field training program. A wellness committee and peer support team continued to promote physical and mental health through on-duty workouts, healthy food options, assisting in stress management and support after critical incidents. A well-trained, well-supported officer is the best investment in public safety. Our community services unit is key to building trust and solving problems alongside the community. In 2024, we participated in dozens of public events, including the popular National Night Out, teen and youth academies, Shop With A Cop, and the first annual Cops in Car, Car Show, giving officers a chance to connect beyond enforcement. This work is led by a diverse team: police service technicians, who assist with investigations, crashes, and outreach; beat coordinators, addressing long-term neighborhood concerns; school resource officers, keeping campuses safe; the crisis intervention team, pairing an officer with a clinician, to assist those in mental health crisis and connecting them to appropriate services. Our explorer program contributed over 600 volunteer hours, and one explorer just became a full-time police officer. In fact, we just hired another explorer today to enter the academy in July. Our outreach coordinator expanded our presence on Facebook, Instagram, and X, strengthening our digital connection with the community. These efforts go beyond safety, they build lasting partnerships. Our specialized units expand the department's capabilities beyond routine patrol, playing a critical role in high-risk, complex, and ceremonial operations. In 2024, our K-9 unit was deployed 71 times, aiding in 58 suspect apprehensions, and 14 firearm searches tied to violent crime investigations. The SWAT team and crisis negotiation team responded to multiple critical incidents, prioritizing de-escalation and precision under pressure. Our UAS team, also called drones, supported searches, surveillance, and crime scene documentation with real-time aerial intelligence, while our new mounted enforcement unit grew to four officers, increasing visibility and engagement at events. The honor guard represented SMPD at regional memorials and ceremonies, and the mobile field force remained ready for civil unrest, mutual aid, and large-scale events. The range unit oversaw firearms training, and the arrest and control instructors delivered hands-on self-defense and de-escalation training grounded in real-world tactics. These teams bring expertise, readiness, and depth to our mission of public safety. 2024 was a year of significant technological progress for SMPD, all focused on safety, transparency, and efficiency. We completed our first full year with body-worn cameras, which have already proven essential for evidence gathering, de-escalation, and public trust. We launched briefingroom.com, a digital platform providing legal updates and scenario-based training videos to officers in briefing at the start of their shifts. Our UAS program expanded with more certified operators, enhancing aerial support for searches, crime scene documentation, and tactical incidents. We also deployed the new TASER 10, improving safety and accuracy in high-risk situations. The detective bureau added a smart TV command station for organizing complex investigations, and we implemented LFTA, a software platform to streamline training, performance tracking, and equipment management. We also went live with our DOORS online reporting system, which allows residents to file select reports securely, allowing officers to focus on higher priority calls. These tools are helping us serve smarter, safer, and more effectively. One of our most effective tools in our crime fighting arsenal is our automated license plate reader program. Since its launch in late 2021, the city has deployed 31 city-funded cameras and an additional 104 more through a federal grant, and partnered with local businesses to add 20 private cameras. In just over two years, ALPRs have supported over 1,300 investigations, leading to 474 arrests, and the recovery of 418 stolen vehicles. They've been instrumental in solving serious crimes, including murders, robberies, carjackings, and sexual assaults, many of which likely wouldn't have been solved without this technology. The impact is most visible in auto theft trends depicted in the graph. Santa Maria once averaged over 1,000 stolen vehicles annually, peaking at 1152 in 2022, at the same time we really got our ALPL program ramped up. Two years later, in 2024, that number has dropped to 474, a 59% decrease, a lower number than I can remember ever having experienced in my career. And I've worked here for 27 years. This program is a true force multiplier, delivering results that far exceed the investment. I'd like to honor our 2024 retirees. I'd like to recognize these five outstanding individuals who retired this past year. Chief Mark Schneider served for 29 years, Lieutenant Woodrow Vega for 30 years, property and evidence technician Melissa Johnson for 21 years, records tech Susan Clement for 13 years, and police officer Francisco Velazquez for 20 years. Together, they dedicated 113 years of service to the Santa Maria community. These leaders helped shape our culture, mentored generations of officers These leaders helped shape our culture, mentored generations of officers, and laid the foundation for the apartment we're proud of today. We thank them for their extraordinary service and wish them all the best in their next To our city council and the community, I say thank you for your continued support and partnership. We look forward to another year of progress, innovation, and most importantly, community safety. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commander Cohen. Any questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Flores.
I just want to say thank you to Santa Maria PD for all that you do in protecting our city and the quick responses that I've been hearing that they're responding faster than ever. So I appreciate that, and I just want to shout out to our Santa Maria Police Department. I think we're the best.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I remember when we had the conversation about the plate readers, and there was some heat when that happened because there was a misunderstanding, miscommunication, misinformation about what they were going to pay for. You know, they were talking about Big Brother looking at everybody and just like looking at us. But I've seen this system before in other cities. I live it and also visit, and in my mind, it's like, yeah, we gotta go for it. And I'm glad that the results that actually work out, because I think it's an investment that it was worth it, and it's been worth it. And actually, I'm a little bit biased, just full disclosure. I got my car stolen here in Santa Maria, and it came back, one piece. And so I can tell from my personal experience as well that it was part of the great job that the police department have done, and it means when somebody steals something for you, you feel violated. And you guys pulling this number, because there was this, twenty-twenty-two, I remember, people were calling me, and especially in Northwest Section where a lot of residential, people was like, Carlos, what's going on? They just stealing our vehicles. And it was hard for me to say, well, you know, we'll see what we can do. And being able to lower that number, I'm glad, I'm happy, and also just want to say, on behalf of District One, we appreciate the reduction of that crime particularly. It was a very high concern in my district. So thank you, guys, and keep working hard. And, well, Chief, you got some numbers there, and hopefully next year, we'll come up with better ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Soto?
Yes, thank you for the thorough report. It was really great to see the work and the impact. My question is around the mental health response that was mentioned in the report. Can you talk me a little bit, can you speak a little bit more to that and what that looks like, who the partnerships are with?
Sure. It's really a testament to our commitment to seek long-term solutions rather than taking a Band-Aid approach. We can't simply arrest our way out of the problem that we're experiencing with the people challenged with mental health on the streets. So we've partnered with a mental health clinician from Behavioral Wellness from the county, and the clinician and our officer are a team, and they go out together in a car, and they get to know the individuals who are repeat contacts, and they offer them services and try and get them plugged in to services to try and help their situation, reduce our calls for service. And so it's a new approach for us. We've been doing it now for probably a few years. I don't know if we've hit three yet, but it's a popular program, and they really, they're the first go-to when we get calls involving mental health, and that alleviates the patrol officers from having to respond. The officer doesn't wear a traditional uniform, and the idea is to lower how the people experiencing mental health crisis when they see a uniform that might be escalating. So they wear clothes that look more similar to civilian attire. They're specially trained in de-escalation and dealing with people in mental health crisis, and so the program's been highly successful in our opinion, and that's kind of a summary of it.
Is there an ability to expand that? Is there a need to expand?
The ability with funding and staffing always exists. To see if we get a return on that investment, I think would require us to really sit down and look at the numbers and see if that would require an additional officer. I can't answer that question right now.
That'd be interesting. In page ten of the report where you all go over just high-level types of crime, part one, crime totals, it doesn't really get broken down by youth on youth, there's not a lot of information on like youth on youth violence. I don't think that that's really touched on. The report doesn't really touch on that, and so I'm wondering if you can give us some insights as to what two thousand and twenty-four looked like when it comes to youth on youth violence, if you have that information readily available.
I don't have our crime statistics broken down by demographic. That is something, we do have a crime analyst, that is something that we could pull for you, but I don't have that information in front of me.
Yeah, that would be great for us to get that report, to see that. And then, aside from, I know we also support our local school districts with SROs on campus, and so aside from having SROs stationed at some of our schools, aside from them being on campus, what other, how else do we measure like success, I guess, of them being there? Is there, and I'm trying to find a way to best formulate my question, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, aside from their presence there, is there anything else that we try to track in terms of, yeah, anything else that we try to track to kind of measure, like, okay, having SROs on campus is good because of these reasons aside from just having a police officer on campus? Are there other metrics that we can track that we're possibly not thinking about in this moment?
Of course. Success can be tracked in multiple ways. It could be calculated in response times. It could be calculated in how many calls for service patrol officers aren't having to break away from to go to the campus. It can be measured in the fact that the schools themselves place great value on the school resource program, to the degree even with constrained budgets, they're willing to carve out funds to support the officers. That's a measure of success. It can be measured in how many complaints we receive from parents at the schools, our calls for service going up or down. So yes, there's many, many ways to measure the success of the program other than just their mere presence. I would agree with that.
Yeah, and I guess I should have been more explicit, but I was thinking more in terms of like mentorship, support, conversations. I don't know, and I don't know if there's a, I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas that come into my head out there. And then, my other question is around, I hate this term, but like community policing, so having our officers like on foot or on bikes, and I know that that's something that folks really like to see, that especially around like school zones, as students are walking to and from from school. And so, I mean, I guess my question is, at the moment, how many officers do we have on like foot or bike patrol, and is there some sort of idea or vision to increase that? Is that something that in your opinion and in the department's opinion, you see as being fruitful in our community? And I bring this up just because of the times that we're living in and the fear that is in so many of our, in some community members, given the current immigration policies coming down from the federal level, and so I'm just, that I ask.
I appreciate the question. I guess my first thought is that community policing is not limited to the vehicle we drive or how we get to and from. It's a philosophy, it's a commitment of how we interact with people, listening more than talking, getting their perspectives and their insights on how to seek long-term solutions to problems. That occurs whether we're on foot patrol or bike patrol, or we're at a coffee shop or on a call for service. So expanding it is expanding the philosophy more than it is giving us different vehicles on which to be transported by. Bike patrol, I did it for years. I found it highly effective, and for the reasons that you point out, because it's really simple to get off a bicycle and interact with people. And sometimes people are more comfortable interacting with an officer on a bicycle. They're very close and easy to talk to rather than a car. So I'm a big advocate of bike patrol. There's a lot that can be accomplished with it. Currently, the police department has twenty sworn vacancies, but we're building, and as we fill those vacancies, the possibilities on expanding different specialty assignments always exist, and we'll definitely sit down and have strategic conversations about how those resources could be best deployed.
Great. And my last question, sorry, I keep saying my last question, but going back to the mental health response, I think I gave this, or something that was brought up to my attention about two years ago, when we had an off-duty officer respond to an incident, I would work it. I, from being a part of those conversations, a big takeaway from me was the need to have the similar support systems that the county offers to, like victim witness that offers to victims who have experience of crime, some sort of similar program, or, I don't know, even just the way in which our department handles having conversations with loved ones of young people who have been involved in a crime, whether they themselves are perpetrating it, or they're victims of it. I definitely noticed the lack of like support and resources that were provided in that moment as we were, as our officers were having these really intense conversations with the families, and so I'm, I know that this isn't in the report, but I'm just, it just seems like now may be a good time to bring it up, but just bringing it up, that was something that I noticed then, and I hope that is something we can address or we've been able to address. And I'm happy to have more conversations outside of the council to share more as to what my learnings were from that, being a part of that experience, but I'm thinking it could be tied back to the mental health response aspect that the cities are already engaged in, and, yeah, perhaps having more conversations, especially as we come around budget discussions.
I look forward to those conversations. I do recall the incident to which you're referring to, and I would also let you know that the Santa Maria Police Department has a victim witness coordinator housed in our detective bureau, and that might be a resource for what you're referring to.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commander Cohen, for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria?
Speakers may provide public comments on any matter within the subject jurisdiction of the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, maximum fifteen minutes for public comment period. Unless the majority of the council objects, the mayor may provide speakers more or less time to speak. All comments or queries shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any specific member thereof. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954282, the Ralph M. Brown Act, no action or discussion by the city council shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda except to briefly provide information, ask for clarification, provide direction to staff, or schedule a matter for a future meeting.
Thank you. I have just one request to speak. Madam Clerk? Okay. Lori Tamora?
Good evening, Lori Tamora. I'm here in response to the presentation that we just had as a member of the Santa Maria Police Council. Last year, I served as the president of that council. The organization's been around for seventeen years. It's a citizens' support system for the police department. Over the last seventeen years, we've been able to help with over two million dollars worth of support to the police department. I was pleased to see many of the pictures of items that we were able to provide over and above what the normal city budget provides, including the equestrian team, the drones, the tasers, dogs, a number of different elements that we've been able to support over the years. Coming up here on June twentieth is our big fundraiser for the year, and I do want to note that it is sold out both for the golf as well as the dinner event, and that just shows how much this program has helped not only the community but the police department. Just one final note, anyone can be a member of the police council, and those out there that would like to support the police department, particularly with the success that they have currently, we are definitely, would love to have you become a member of the police council. So thank you very much, and congratulations to the presentation and those that are here.
Thank you. And be sure and thank the police council from the city of Santa Maria, because they do so much good. Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar to see when have items they wish to pull for discussion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Haring none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Potemus Caballo?
That was the, sorry. Oh.
We're on the consent calendar.
With the consent, just skip. For a moment, does that? Yeah, I believe I do have an item.
We're taking the vote right now.
Yeah. Yes, aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Who's in carries?
No, please. There was another item.
Okay.
It was a, next thing.
The first public hearing item will be a presentation on the twenty-two-five, twenty-six landscape district to be delivered by Director of Recreation and Parks, Alex Posada. How do you like your new job, Mr. Posada?
Thank you, Mayor. It's great. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here to bring you up to date on the city of Santa Maria for master landscape districts and our twenty special benefit zones. The item before you is the Declaration to Levy and Collect the Assessments for Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six Fiscal Year. Back in May, you received a copy of the engineers' reports, which detail the assessments and the map detailing the parcels that would be assessed. So tonight, it's the opportunity to accept any public comments on, protest comments, or comments on the general operation of the landscape districts. Just to give you a little bit of background, this was established back in the nineteen-eighties as a way to fund development impacts for things along the boulevards in the city, for parks that are part of a new development. They generate revenue to help keep up our rights of way is really the main focus of it. So as you drive around the city, especially in the newer parts of town, and I'll say newer from the nineteen-eighties on forward, you'll see the landscaping being pretty intensive as opposed to how it was prior to those years. The Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen-seventy-two is the law that we work under. In the state, from the state of California, it provides for the annual review of assessments and cost of operations. So one of the things that our staff does in working with the Public Works Department is to create the assessments based on the benefit that each of the properties receives within a landscape district. The amount of the assessments are based on what it costs to operate each of the districts within a fiscal year, and then they are portioned out to each of the parcels that are within the district. Every year, we work with the Director of Finance to come up with a number for inflation, the cost of living. This year, that number is 3.4%. So the item that you'll be approving tonight increases assessments by that 3.4% in order for the assessments to keep track, keep pace with the cost of doing service. One of the major costs in doing service in the landscape districts is prevailing wage. All our work that we do within the district contracted out is done according to the prevailing wage laws of the state of California. And also, one of our other big expenses is irrigation water. That accounts for a significant percentage of our budget every year. We've taken some major efforts over the last two years to try to reduce our water consumption by changing out landscaping, artificial, pardon, not artificial turf, turf that grasses that we, areas that don't need to be turf grass, we've removed, we replace them with more drought-tolerant material. We've eliminated a lot of our overhead spraying irrigation systems and replaced them with drip systems so that we can be more efficient with our watering. This year, the landscape district assessments are projected to generate about $5.6 million in revenue. These are collected from 9,888 residential units and 615 commercial properties that make up the districts. The city also provides an amount of money from its general fund, which is called the city's general benefit. This is an estimate for the 23,500 commercial and residential properties that do not contribute to the district, however, benefit from the landscape improvements. During fiscal year 24-25, the most, well, as I mentioned, the most significant cost has been irrigation water. I mentioned some of the ways that we're trying to control that. 2025 also created some new projects in the city, Centennial Gardens, apartments, the Elements mixed-use down on Skyway, the Skyview Homes. All these new developments will contribute to the districts revenue-wise, but they also contribute to the districts creating more areas that need to be maintained. So the impacts to the community from the landscape districts is that you're able to drive around the city, be pretty pleased with the landscaping in the areas. One of the comments that we get regularly is the green spaces that we have in our rights-of-way, and also the level of maintenance that is provided via contractors that do probably 90% of the work in the public rights-of-way. So tonight, you'll be asked to adopt the resolution that will set the Declaration to Levy and Collect the Assessments for 25-26. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of the council? Mr. Esquivel?
Well, more than, well, yeah, it can be a question, but some information that I've been receiving, you know, and it kind of like comes along with this item. It's a Prescott Park, and I actually ended up going and walked, and it just, the grass is, it's just horrible. And what's, I know that, you know, water is expensive, actually is the biggest expenditure that the, that your department has. Does this fee contribute, would contribute to work on getting this park, you know, green, back to green?
So Prescott Park is one of the pre-1980 facilities, so we don't dedicate any landscape district funds to that particular park. I'll give you the example of North Prescott Ranch Park, which is adjacent to Tommy Kuntz Junior High School. That is in the district, so they do receive district funds to pay for their irrigation. Prescott Park is solely a general fund park, and it has some unique issues there. You know, it's a 1960s vintage park with a 1960s vintage irrigation system. We do, we have submitted a capital improvement program request to look at upgrading the system, but we also have some issues that deal with the fact that it used to be the old city landfill. Staff from the Utilities Department, their regulatory compliance person has been working with us to try to see what we can do out there to help. So I will tell you that at this point, this item does not affect Prescott Park.
Okay. And I was looking at the maps, and I see the special benefit zone. When you talk about a special benefit zone, those are the areas that benefit from these green area, for these, yeah, green facilities.
Yeah, a real good example in your district would be the Cherry Blossom Development, where, within that development, when it was built, the developer put in special improvements. They put in special landscaping along their walkways, they put in lighting, they, where the cul-de-sacs terminate, they have large turf areas and trees. So when they build something like that, we create an assessment that reflects the maintenance for those specific improvements. And then those residences are still in the master district, the northeast, or the northwest district, and they pay an amount towards everything else that you see on the rights-of-way in the northwest district.
Yeah, and I ask this because, you know, I think it's fair that if you are benefiting from the landscape, a public landscape, kind of chipping into it. Also, it would be unfair for those that do not have that to be paying for something they don't benefit from. So in the case of this, you know, the case that you mentioned, Cherry Blossom, so just the people that live in that area, how do you, how does that work?
So it's really mapped out based on the development. So when a developer brings forward a project, we work with the Community Development Department to set the boundaries for that special benefit zone. And so whatever happens landscape improvement-wise in that area will be assessed under a special benefit zone.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Soto, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I think you, I heard you allude to this in the report, where you mentioned that the total, the total revenues collected from the landscape districts, including the city benefit portion, is that enough to cover the cost?
Some, well, it's a challenge for some of the districts. The older districts, the southeast district in particular, which is the South Mill or South College area, with Sunrise Hills and those areas, they came in at a very low assessment. And in order to increase the assessments, Prop 218 requires a vote, so we have not gone there. So that district has had financial issues for the last several years. We've implemented different strategies to try to bring that under control. This year, we've eliminated that particular area from our contract, and city personnel will be taking on the responsibility to maintain that area in an effort to bring the budget under control.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open a public hearing. So, Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak or written comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Esquivel?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next public, oh, thank you, Mr. Posada.
Thank you, Alex.
The next public hearing item will be on the objective residential design standards to be delivered by Director of Community Development, Shannon Dow.
Madam Mayor, city council members. Excuse me. As you're well aware, the state has usurped a great deal of local authority in recent years in the interest of affordable housing. I am happy to share that tonight you have the opportunity to take some of that power back. Objective design standards are an opportunity to shape streamlined projects that qualify for streamlining under the state standards and apply objective design standards to them. This will give our planners greater authority to influence the design, character, and style of proposed housing projects that come into the city of Santa Maria, and the ability to ensure that they are sensitive to the context of the neighborhoods and are of a higher design quality. Objective design standards are defined as something that can objectively be determined based on a third-party read of documentation that you can apply without subjective input. The objective design standards are going to apply to all residential project applications. They do not establish a new project review process. They do not remove the discretionary process for typical residential projects, and they are the opportunity to influence the design of the streamlined projects that are currently going to be ministerial under the state standards. It's important to note that this, we will still have the opportunity for projects that don't meet these standards and are looking for variations to go through the discretionary process, so we do maintain that flexibility. Additionally, the objective design standards as proposed, they include single-family residential and multiplexes, garden-style walk-ups and row houses, and multifamily or mixed-use with four or more stories. Site design standards include pedestrian connectivity, building orientation and character, parking location, utilities, lighting, and landscaping. The building exterior design sections will include maximum building lengths, separation between buildings, building elevation breaks and modulation, building entries, and then articulation with decorative elements, as well as roof overhang. And finally, design details will address things like facades, window recesses, exterior materials, and colors. We have found, we have only had one streamlined project in Santa Maria to date under SB 35, and one thing we found is that we really had, as staff, minimal ability to ask for things, as they was going through the planning commission, you know, a standard answer was, "Sorry, we have to approve it." So these objective design standards will fill that gap and allow us to influence that and, again, demand a higher design quality. This is the result of extensive community and stakeholder engagement that was performed by our planning department. It was kicked off as part of the six-cycle housing element back in 2023 and has been funded entirely with grant funds through a local early action plan grant. Outreach began in 2023 after completion of the housing element. It's included a project website, fact sheet, community visual preference survey in May of '23, two city-hosted office hour sessions for public question and comment, multiple meetings and working sessions with local housing developers, drafts for public review, three separate ones issued in April of '24, November of '24, and January of 2025, three planning commission study sessions to gather input from the public and development community in December, January, and March of this year, and finally, a planning commission hearing in April, which garnered unanimous approval. So it really has been extensive input from the community, and it is reflected in the final document. With that, we are proposing adoption of the design standards, which will take effect immediately if you do approve.
Thank you, Ms. Dow. Are there any questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Esquivel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just a clarification question would be, you mentioned about the discretionary process?
Yes.
And that's, I just, if I understand correctly, these goals that we, you know, objectives for design are not, you know, if you're not here, you're not allowed to do anything. It's like, there's ways that, and I ask this because, you know, there might be some developers or particularly smaller, the smaller developers, that might want to add two units in a lot or, you know, and maybe they cannot afford to go through everything, but they can still, there's ways for them to still be able to fulfill that project, or how does that work?
Right. It does, as far as how many units can go on a lot, that's going to depend on a variety of factors in terms of zoning, which state laws apply, and we're seeing more and more of those laws passed that do add more and more densities on traditionally single-family lots, unfortunately. So that, we'll go with the laws that are current at that point in time. As far as the design standards, they are able to, any of those streamlined that historically, before all these new laws that came forth from the state, would have gone through the discretionary process, meaning the city can weigh in and be subjective about the design style, it can go through the planning commission, and they can ask for different aspects. They'll still have that opportunity if they don't like the objective design standards, if there's something that they want to change, if there's something they want to vary from. Otherwise, if they do qualify for the streamlining, they have to obey these standards, or they have that other avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? I will open a public hearing, and I have one request to speak. Lori Tamora?
Good afternoon, Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts. I believe it was about a year ago that we were before you in regards to the public presentation on the design guidelines, and the city council sent it back for staff review and working with the development community. So over the last year, as noted by Jenna, that there has been a number of meetings with the city staff, with Frank and Dana, and the Home Builders Association has been involved in the process, as well as local developers that are focused more on the infill developments, duplex, triplex, fourplex type units, which this, these guidelines are pretty much directed towards them. Most large-scale developers will still go through the discretionary process. The design guidelines do provide some recommendations on how future homes would be designed, or multifamily units would be designed, but it still goes through discretionary process, so the opportunities for creativity are still there beyond what the design guidelines provide. And I think that the changes that were made to the document makes it more user-friendly, and we appreciate the effort of staff to listen to the development community and come up with a document that will stand the test of time. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with the city in the future on this project and other projects. We still have the urban design, our forest plan that needs to be done. And so, Alex, that's for you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tamora. Are there any written comments? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Esquivel?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. The last public hearing item will be on the updated 2025 user-free schedule to be delivered by Director of Finance, Rebecca Campbell. Good evening, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Good evening, council members. Rebecca Campbell, this is the first item of three I'm here to present tonight, and so I'll kick it off. We are here, I'm, with me today is Budget Manager Rick Kirkwood, and I'm getting up to speed on everything, so I did bring Rick with me, just in case there's any questions I can't answer. So thank you, Rick, for being here. So kicking off the fee schedule, get used to this, the top button, here we go. Okay, so user fees or personal choice services are defined as a fee that is charged for a material benefit of an individual. And so the philosophy there is that it is borne by the group receiving the service and not by the overall community. Services received by the overall community, such as police and fire services, those would be supported by taxes. So this is narrowed down. Looking at the history, the city underwent a comprehensive study in 2020. A firm was hired to look at all the fees for the city, and it took a year-long process. And on May 4th of 2021, the city council did adopt an update to the fee schedule. At that time, the city council raised At that time, the city council raised the fees by 50% of what the study showed, and they made a goal to bring them up to full-cost recovery by the year 2026. They did achieve full-cost recovery in year 2024. The city contracted with Revenue Cost Specialists, or RCS, to do the study, and they were also hired to update that study on every even year beyond that. And they did that by looking and assessing the costs that go into the service of that fee, by looking at salary costs and the person performing the task, and also updating the cost allocation plan to go with that. So for fees in this update, RCS came back and they said, for this study, we should apply the Consumer Cost Index to most of the fees. And so the result of the Consumer Price Index, that is 3.3%. And so those were applied to most of the fees in the schedule. They also, there were three fees that warranted further analysis. So the first fee was the copy fees. They did a deep dive into looking at the copy fees and the task involved with that. In different departments, there's different levels of employees doing that service, so they took a look at it and they said, well, for the fair political practices services, any copies that result out of that, they recommended that we charge 10 cents per page. They looked at all the others, and the fees currently are, you know, some of them are, the first 10 pages are free, and then after that is 25 cents per page. So they recommended no changes beyond the FPPC change. So for those type of documents, it's 10% per page. You also want to keep in mind that there's not a lot of requests with technology updates. Most things are sent electronically. If they come in and they need a flash drive, there's a fee for that, $5, and there's no change recommended for that. They also took a look at the credit card processing fee. They recalculated actual credit card processing fee to ensure the full-cost recovery. The analysis showed that the transaction fee was anywhere between 1.2% and 29.7%, and that the average processing fee was 2.8%. They came back and they recommended that we keep it as-is at 2.5%. They also looked at the bid protest fee, and they came back with some recommendations. However, we would like to pause on that at this time. Staff will be undergoing a comprehensive update to the purchasing policy after we implement the new ERP system, the Workday system for the enterprise resources planning. And so we'll come back once that policy is updated, and we will address the bid protest fee at that time. Okay, so this was a shorter update, as we applied the Consumer Price Index to most of the fees in the attachment. And so we would ask that your city council hold a public hearing for any comments, any recommendations, and that you adopt the resolution to adopt these fee updates. I also want to note that in item 14A, after this hearing, it's the cost-of-service study that's going to be presented. There are some recommendations in there for fee changes, and anything that results of that, we will reconcile with this fee document.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Campbell? Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you for the presentation. Regarding the Customer Price Index, right now, it's a 3.3. Yeah. If that changes next year to a lower percentage, would that influence, the variation will be updated every year, or how often? How does the changes work?
I understand we would work with our consultant. We would evaluate the costs, and it would be based on the cost of the service. So if the, we'll evaluate if it goes down, but there may be other changes that, we want to make sure that we're at full-cost recovery, so we'll evaluate it.
Good. I need to update yearly or?
Every even year.
Every, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? I will open up a public hearing. Are there any requests to speak or written comments?
No, ma'am.
I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Potem Esquivel?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
We'll now move to the regular portion of the business items. The first regular business item is the Cost of Service Study to be delivered by Director of Recreation and Parks Alex Posada.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, again, happy to be up here to talk to you about this Cost of Service Study. So one of the unique things that has happened over the years is when the citywide studies for costs and fees have been done, recreation and park fees have always been kind of set aside because they're a unique animal. So, but we did feel it was important to try and tackle that and bring it back to you. The item before you tonight is simply to set a procedure for us to use for setting fees for classes and programs. Dr. Campbell made a good comment when she said, you know, there's this community benefit versus individual benefit, and that's really what we're talking about in recreation programs. Typically, you'll have a program that has a community impact, for example, swim lessons. Those are important for people to learn how to be safe in the water. But on the other hand, you have a program like adult softball, where it's an individual benefit for those individuals playing on the team. So what we tried to do in the report, and we also use CRS, RCS for the study, and we had been engaged with them several times over the last years trying to come up with a plan. So I'd like Recreation Division Manager Dennis Smitherman to join me at the podium, so we can talk a little bit about where this study was going. So what we tried to do was to assess the actual costs associated with providing the various development, the various department programs and services, special events, and rental facilities. So these are the kind of the areas that we have most of the fees. We wanted to have a way to not have to bring every single fee back to the city council every time a fee needed to be updated. Again, the uniqueness of recreation programs is it might be skateboarding this year, and next year it could be highlight. You know, there's, that's the teeter totter that we have as far as public interest goes. So right now, pickleball is the craze. So, you know, we have a lot of people engaged with pickleball. So it's just kind of a moving target. So what we propose here is to walk you through the study. So I'm going to have Dennis go ahead and walk you through, and keep in mind, we're not asking to set any fees tonight. We're only asking you to look at the policy and see if such a policy works for the council.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, tonight, we are going to go over the RCS study and the objectives, goals, and the pyramid that we'll be asking for your approval on. The study objectives was really look at the cost of services that we're providing, both directly and indirectly, whether it be our green shirt rec leaders out there with the arts and craft supplies, or our field attendant out at Hagerman Softball Complex. So RCS took all of those numbers and created this great plan for us. The key findings is we subsidize, the council subsidizes every program within the Recreation and Parks Department, whether it be a picnic site at Presker Park or a crochet class at the Senior Center. The leisure services really, again, go back to the effectiveness of the community, whether it be an individual benefit or community-wide benefit. And these are the five tiers that we'll be looking at tonight for your review. The exclusive individual benefit, the substantial individual benefit, the balanced beneficiaries, community benefit, and then the community-wide benefit and complete access for our residents. So what we're looking at is really how we'd like to, RCS is proposing that we bring to you to set our fees in the future. Exclusive individual benefit includes things like a private party or private use of the pool, or maybe a ballfield rental. RCS is recommending 75% to 100% cost recovery. A substantial individual benefit, which includes adult sports and recreation classes, still important for our community, but still highly personalized to the individual participating in them, and that RCS is recommending a 50% to 75% cost recovery. A balanced beneficiary, like Alex said, is things like swim lessons, things that not only help the individual, but in the long term will help the community. Use sports, swim lessons, lap swim, and pool activities, really to keep our community healthy and safe. More of a substantial benefit to a larger group with, includes youth and teen programs, and senior services, adaptive services, and our general recreation programs. And level one is our community benefit, which is open to everyone in the community, usually is no fee, includes things like our red, white, and zoom Fourth of July Festival, our Dia de los Muertos, and different programs and activities we offer for the entire community. Currently, there's some statistics here. We range in subsidizing anywhere between, I'm sorry, the cost recovery is anywhere between 0% and our high cost recovery is only 24%. So we're asking the council tonight to adopt the cost recovery pyramid as the foundation for setting the prices in the future, establishing cost recovery targets using that pyramid level, not per program, review fees to allow us to look at other agencies, both local nonprofits that we don't want to compete with, but other agencies outside of the city as well, and then, of course, asking to maintain subsidies for residents. Thank you.
Dennis, can you put the pyramid back up, please? Thank you. So this is really kind of the foundation for what we're asking the council to consider tonight. With the ability to look at this pyramid and allowing staff and the Park Commission to look at fees based on this pyramid, it would give us the flexibility to create cost recovery that is more impactful to the general fund. We generate a substantial amount of revenue through facility rentals, but they also cost us a lot of money. So what we're trying to do is get those numbers up to a point where they're closer in the recovery, closer to the 100%. So for tonight, again, like the Park, the Park Commission worked hard on coming up with the numbers that you see here. They also had an interest in making sure that, you know, no one person or group gets hit hard with fees, but they understood the need to have some kind of a balanced program in fees being set. So in closure, I guess, I'd like to take some questions from you as to what you think of adopting such a program where our fees are based on this pyramid, and we'll try and answer any questions you might have as far as, you know, potential impacts.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, boy, this idea, it's interesting. It's challenging at the same time, you know, how to balance, how to find that, how to put one in one tier and the other, and the, I mean, there's some activities that it's easy to put them in one place or the other, but if we go to, I believe, if you go to the, two more slides? One more? Like this one, balance, the balanced beneficiaries. I mean, youth sports, I get that one. Swim lessons, I mean, I don't know, just, I think there's a lap swim, how much the community really benefits from having somebody swimming on the pool. I get that, you know, it's important. I see this challenging to start, like, where do you put each activity? And, I mean, we love having people take advantage of the pool. We want people to be swimming, youth sports, so, I mean, I like the concept. I think it's a balanced concept, that we just not go from here, or here, or here, but it's progressive. And, I mean, I like it, just, you know, really looking deeper on the, these options or where to put it might be something that might be needed to be updated or really revised deeply on if it's level three, two, or especially the ones in the middle. I see the ones that are the tough ones, because it's like, who gets benefit, really? So, but overall, I like the concept of the idea. I think that you guys and the, and the Rec and Parks Commission did a really good job.
Thank you. You know, to use your example of the lap swim, the idea there isn't so much that, oh, you know, John comes down and he swims in the pool for lap swim. The idea is that maybe John has a cardiac condition, or maybe he's trying to lose some weight, or maybe in the long run, maybe it's not our, our fire guys responding to a medical call at John's house. It's kind of that community health is really what we're looking at as far as the lap, using lap swim, like in this example. But yes, that's one of the challenges, and one of the items that we'll bring back to you at a future date will be other recommendations from the Park Commission as to how to manage these, this system, once, if it's in place, if you adopt it tonight and if we put it in place, what it will really look like in operation.
Yes, Ms. Flores?
Alex, I just had a question, not that anything's wrong. When was the last time we had a cost recovery?
The last time in park fees, I would say, was?
2020.
2020, so.
2020, okay.
Yeah. And that was a modest increase. I believe it was a four, it could go up to 5% based on the course, the class that was being offered.
Okay, yeah, this makes sense.
You know, when I look at these and I look at youth sports, because we want to get kids involved in things, but as you were saying with like, with lap swim, to me, that's a health issue, because there are people who can't do other, like, weight-bearing exercises, and the doctors want them out there doing something, so lap swimming is really great, and any of your pool activities. And my position is I would like to minimize any of the costs for youth and for seniors. And we probably all like the pyramid, but one time you get one issue that's going to fill these chambers, you're going to say, oh, but that was the exception of the pyramid, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We realize there's always the exception.
There's always an exception.
Ms. So, have you got any questions or comments?
It's more comments. Well, I'll start with my one question. Is it me, or does a report, from reading the report, it seems as if there, it's difficult to track, that we lack systems to measure or to track the demographics of participants who participate, who take advantage, not advantage, I don't want to, who?
Participate.
Who participate.
Yes.
You know, for instance, like, I don't know, like, income, race, language, age, even zip code, I think having that information could also be a key part in helping us analyze, you know, which programs are being used?
Sure.
By, by residents, and therefore also help us kind of determine how we want to raise fees, not just by having, I mean, blanketing, right, a fee structure.
You know, and we do have a pretty good way of tracking at least the geography of where our residents are coming from, because everyone has to register for a class. So when they register, it goes into our automated So when they register, it goes into our automated system. So we're able to break up by zip code, by street address, which kind of gives you, you know, you could use it anecdotally and say, you know, if an individual is coming from the southwest district, you know, maybe their economic status is a little different than maybe somebody coming from the northwest section. It's able to do, anecdotally, to do those kinds of things. I do think that, you know, to be frank with you, is we don't use that enough. It's certainly something that we should look at. And I think in your question earlier to Mr. Sumitaman on the other proposal was, how do we evaluate what we do? And that is something that we do ask our participants to tell us how we are working out, either through a survey, or they can participate simply by going on the city website and let us know how services are going.
So when you say that we don't utilize the information, not that, that we're not fully using the information that we're gathering to kind of help us, you know, make decisions around like pricing, or what classes we ramp up or scale back on, what is it that we need in order for us to start doing that? Is it like, do we need an analyst to do that?
Well, let me back up to where Dennis was talking earlier about the fact that the Leisure Needs Assessment is our kind of temperature gauge for what the community wants to see in programs and services. Now, so that's kind of what we, as he mentioned, that's how we kind of look at what programs are going to be offering over the next series of years. But the information that is in the computer system is a whole different animal.
Right.
And yes, to extract that information, we've started to be able to market directly to people who use our programs, which is great, but we miss those people who don't use our programs. So we have to figure out a way to access them. And to answer your question, it is a personnel-related thing, that we don't have the individuals who are necessarily well-versed in how to use the system and how to get the information out of it.
Thank you for that. Something for us to definitely keep in mind is how can we use that data that we're gathering to kind of help us make more informed decisions, especially when it comes to pricing structures. The report also used the phrase a lot, or the term a lot, like, market, like, meeting market standards, meeting market standards. And my concern with that is that, I mean, this is just a comment and a personal opinion, but that it could price out residents. You know, that even the slightest increase can make accessibility a huge challenge, especially for seniors and youth. And so, I mean, I feel the need to say that, and if there's anything that we can do to
Thank you.
Have some sort of scaling fee schedule, or a scaling fee program as well, or I don't know what the solution would be, but I do notice that the report alluded, alluded to both, alluded, kept using the term market.
Right, and, you know, I'll attribute that to the consulting firm, because they do look at what's, what's, what is a hotel charge to rent a building for a wedding reception versus what does the city charge? So market does come into play in those kinds of areas. I'll say that we pretty much have the corner on the market on recreation programs, short of maybe the Y or Boys and Girls Club. So there's really not a lot of comparisons there. So I think programmatically, we don't see that there's going to be that much of a significant impact using the term market on those kinds of programs. It really is more of the facility rentals, which, again, we're aware, we certainly are cognizant of what our residents can afford. And we want to be able to rent our facilities. A vacant facility does us no good.
Yeah, and then my last point would be around transportation and getting to and from, like, the Able Maldonado and whatnot. And so I'm also just curious, like, how can we, it goes back to the information that we have, right? Like, how can we assess, you know, what youth are using the Able? Is, I mean, is there a need for a satellite Able in other parts of town? But how do we assess, like, how do we assess that? How do we assess whether transportation is an obstacle for folks to get from? I mean, we know it is, but like, how can, where is the data to back that, I guess, is what I'm asking?
You know, there is no data collected right now on that. And maybe something we can consider looking at is is to use groups like the Mayor's Youth Task Force and some of the other groups to actually, you know, give us some feedback on the issues related to transportation. Councilmember Soto, you might recall, a few years back, you asked for some funding to open our facilities up
Yeah, that was great.
Additional hours, just right before COVID. And then COVID kind of hit us and messed that all up. But during those times, we were able to bring in youth in the afternoons or in the early evenings to use some of the gymnasiums. So there is a need out there, but to quantify it, we would really have to go out and do a whole separate survey from what our Leisure Needs Assessment does.
Great. Well, thank you so much for this.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. Of course, when you come back, when the report comes back, and I'm sure they take in the demographics and everything else, so few people use our bus service, and that is part of the problem. And like I said, when I'm out with these, our Mayor's Youth Task Force, a lot of these kids don't know what we have out there. And I don't know how better, because I think we do a great job of marketing, but, you know, there is a population that we obviously aren't getting to. I don't know what to do with that.
And we did have some success with the transit vouchers that were provided by
For young people?
Transit for youth.
Yeah.
That really helped get kids around the city.
Right.
I don't know if that's coming back. I'll pass that off to Director Filgoni, but, you know, it really did help. It made our youth much more mobile.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one of our Rec and Parks Commissioners here, and I would like to, you know, for her to have an opportunity to, if it's possible, to give some input to us and how this process was. And yeah. She said yeah. Oh, Commissioner Godino. I call you Cynthia all the time. I prefer Cynthia, but.
Hello, everyone. I'm Commissioner Godino with Rec and Park. Well, it was also challenging for me to understand it, but finally, when I did, when you see the top of the pyramid, the top of the pyramid is mostly about facilities. Let me give you a really good example. The Vets Hall. The amount we pay to rent the Vets Hall compared to other facilities outside our city, or even within our city, that are being rented for weddings, for continentas, for everything, it's not even half of what other people pay in those other facilities. So like Seasonal Ranch, that's my understanding. It's off of sway, and it's a beautiful place, but they're renting, I think it's like $5,000 for a Saturday, I think. It might have changed already, because that was like a year ago. So the city's fees are minimal. And they're not covering the maintenance of the facility, because the facility has to be maintained, you know, all the time. So that's what they're trying to present to you. That the top of the pyramid is the facilities, because the fees are hardly, they're not covering the maintenance. I do understand about, you know, the lap swim and, you know, youth sports, that's something like Mr. Posada said, we can figure out later on where we're going to be putting it on the pyramid. But the top part is facilities. And that's something that we do have to change immediately, because there's nothing coming back from what we're charging, from what they're charging. So that's my two cents on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I definitely concur with that statement with Commissioner Godino. And it's, you know, there are some things that we cannot afford. I mean, if we had plenty of money and we could just have extra, that would be a different story and a different conversation. But nowadays, with how we are and the position we are financially, I think it's, we need to do, we need to act on this one. And I would love actually to see these, you talk about kind of like the operation and how to place this one. That's kind of like the second item on the, I mean, if, I wish I could have seen it today. That's my only, and so one of my concerns, and Councilmember Soto mentioned that, is there may be some changes in prices that might make it prohibit, you know?
Yes.
I don't want to use the possible, but really hard for some community members to access to those. So that's one of my concerns, because here in the report, we talk about percentage, but not price. So, you know, it's not the same 10% of $5 than 10% of $1,000. So it's, that's my only, that's the only thing that concerns me about it. But, I mean, overall, I understand that portion, the portion of the top and the bottom, they have to be, I think it's, I like them, just that concern concerns me.
Thank you.
Mr. Posada, and I'm thinking about the two pools. And, wait, so you have, you have Santa Maria. Does Pioneer have pools?
Yes.
Okay, that's right, okay. So how does that work into our Recs and Parks?
So we have a contract with the High School District to provide the maintenance component of the pool, which is basically the sanitary, the sanitary system in the pool to make sure the pool is operating at a proper level. We have staff that goes to each of those pools, does that work? And we're reimbursed by the High School District for that service. In the summer, programming-wise, Pioneer High School is, well, the council contributed to that project. So we have use rights, I guess, to use the pool during summer programming. So we have opened it over the course of various summers since it was built to offer programs there. So instead of swim lessons at Paul Nelson, we offer them at that area of town, so people in that, in those neighborhoods can come by. Or if their Paul Nelson is, for some reason, has a swim meet or something going on, we can still move our lessons to another pool. High School District has been good to work with over the last several years, and, you know, we've had a good partnership there.
Okay, and then we also have the pool at Hancock. So now, I don't even know, are kids taking swimming lessons at the high school also?
Do we? We don't offer lessons at those pools, correct? We'll open them up for public swim or
Recreation.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions of the council? Are there any, Madam Clerk, are there requests to speak or written comments? Okay, do I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, do I, no, a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Potem Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Posada. The next regular business item is the financial report for the third quarter to be delivered by Director of Finance Rebecca Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Patino.
Thank you again.
Okay, so here to present the third quarter update for fiscal year 2025, today we'll be taking a look at the period of the third quarter, which is all the way up through March 31st of 2025. And we'll ask that you adopt a resolution with several amendments, and I'll go over those. So some topics for review. We will take a look at an economic outlook. We'll take a look, a deeper dive into the general fund and measure U for revenues and expenditure trends. And then we will give you an update on the enterprise funds for revenue and expenditure trends. And after that, I'll go over the amendments and present those to you. So the US economy shrank 0.3% in the third quarter of 2025. This is compared to 2.4% growth in the fourth quarter of 2024. Our US imports were at 41%. However, it's counted against us for the GDP, because we're buying foreign goods and not US goods. Some economists are predicting slower growth and also predicting a mild recession at the end of the year. And they are pointing to the tariffs and that there'll be changes in spending related to that. US inflation was at 2.4% in March, but home prices continue to rise on the central coast. Medium sales price was up to $653,000 in Santa Maria. US employment rate remained low at 4.2%, however, Santa Maria's jobless rate is 8.1%. Okay, so looking at the general fund for quarter three. When you think about the threshold and you think about the year, we're at the third quarter, so you think about 75% is the target of what we're looking at. So here, looking at the current budget, which is the second column, that is the amended budget, so the adopted budget with any changes throughout the year. We have total revenues and transfer in of $98.7 million. And expenses and transfers out of $112.0 million. Now, skipping over to the next column, the third column, those are our actuals. So looking at the revenues for general fund, we have a 70.4. So we're just about 71.3% of the revenue received. And expenses are at $76.5 million, or 68.3%. So if we look at that right-hand column and you look at those trends, we're at 71% for revenue. That's below the 75% threshold. Our sales tax is down, our transient occupancy tax is down. However, our property tax is up. And when you think about this, property tax comes, there's two payments per year. We've only received the first payment. So we should make up for that loss in sales tax by the end of the year. We're also down at 68.3% in our spending, so that's under the 75% threshold. Okay, looking at the revenues and expenditures, the green bars, so on the left, the first four columns are the revenues and transfer ends. And then the four columns to the right are the expenses and transfer outs. And so the green column is the current year, and the blue column is last year, fiscal year 2324. So it's a comparison. So overall, we are up from last year at this time, but we're under budget for the third quarter. Looking at sales tax, sales tax is down and spending is down. We've talked about the economic trends. Overall, we're trending about $162,000 less or equal to last year. We are hearing from our tax consultant that our sales tax is even trending further down, so we'll get an update on that and bring that back.
What, you mean sales tax, you said sales tax? You said, what's trending down?
Sales tax.
Sales tax is trending down.
Yeah, overall spending and tax on receipts. Looking at sales tax by month, receipts through the third quarter are at 0.9% or $213,000 more than the same period for last year. So looking at the chart, this shows the sales tax by month with the green bars for this current year. The dotted line is what we received last year, fiscal year 2324. And then we're projecting to receive additional. It'll go up in June, so hopefully we'll receive what we had planned in the budget.
It's, sorry, is that because of the, why were you expecting, why are you expecting that increase in June?
Summer.
For the
Summer spending.
Oh, the summer.
Yeah, summer spending and. Yeah, summer spending and, so, and that's what we've received, that's what we've experienced in the past, you know, history. Okay, so looking at some of our variances, so costs for salaries and benefits for staffing under budget by 9% or by 6.57 million. These are due to vacancies, mostly in the police and fire departments, as well as some overtime savings in the fire department related to positions that were added in anticipation of staffing Station 6. Also contracts and services are down, um, under budget by 15, 8.8% or 1.95 million. And that's due to, um, payment for contractual services and timing on those payments, for example, for animal control services. Looking at materials and supplies, we're over budget by 6.1% or 272,000. And that's due to, as, uh, Director Posada talked about earlier, increases in watering for the Rec and Parks Department. But as he stated, the department's taken steps to reduce costs in those areas by switching out irrigation areas and, um, less areas providing for water. So trying to reduce costs where they can. Debt service, we're over budget by 25% or 67,000, but that's due to timing of payments. Transfers out, we're over budget by 8% or 682,000, also due to timing of payments. There's also a general fund subsidy of the library fund, but we're anticipating to be under budget there because of vacancies. Okay, so looking at expenditures by department, this chart shows, uh, the blue is where we are at, um, at quarter three, and you can see the percentages there. All of the departments are under that 75% threshold. Public Works is the closest, um, so they're on, they're on target. And so we're, we are realizing some savings here, and most of that's due to vacancies within the departments. Okay, so now we're taking a look at measure U. So measure U is funding that comes in monthly throughout the year, and we're at 73.8% or 19.7 million received at quarter three. We anticipate more spending in June, so we'll be tracking those measure U receipts and tracking to see if we come within budget. Expenditures are seeing a savings at 58.8%. And so that's related to capital project activity and also the delay of the regional dispatch center that expected to begin in fourth quarter. Okay, so now let's take a look at the enterprise funds. So for the water and wastewater fund, revenues increased by 1.5% or $675,000. That's compared to the prior year, fiscal year 2324, um, due to higher sewer service charges offset by lower revenues generated through sales of metered water. Water and wastewater operational expenses are under budget by 49% due to personnel savings, vacant positions, and due to maintenance and contractual agreements on the timing of those. Similarly, in solid waste, revenues were 11.5 million less than expenditures. Operational costs are under budget by 9.5% or 3.4 million due to vacancy savings and also timing of maintenance agreements. Public transit fund, the fare revenue is 478,000, which is about 31,000 more than last year. The fare box ratio is 8.9% based on the fares received and operating expenses to date. Now I'll go over the budget amendments requested.
Ms. Campbell, may I interrupt you a minute? Back to the solid waste revenue.
Yes.
Solid waste revenues were 11.5 million less. What was that due to?
Less than expenditures.
Less than expenditures. So they're not collecting as much as they're spending is.
Which is a good thing. Right?
Yeah.
It is a lot.
No, it's less. Share.
As is noted there, the revenues were 11 and a half million dollars less than expenditures. Essentially, we spent more money than we brought in. Importantly, in the solid waste fund, the city council approved a significant capital project for us, the cell one phase two expansion, which was roughly 16 and a half million dollars. It's a one-time, uh, capital project. So our budget for this year out of the solid waste fund, particularly disposal, had significant expenditures to essentially expand the landfill in its current place. So, um, over the years, we would anticipate those revenues to come back and pay back for those expenditures.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the first budget amendment is the request for $20,000 for the homeless safety and quality of life project. This was a project that was originally funded with American Rescue Plan Act dollars, $159,000. And this funding would help us get through the rest of the fiscal year, so two more months. And so we, we would request that we fund that so we can continue the project. Looking at the next budget amendment, this is from the fleet services fund. And so we would request that there would be increased appropriations of 200,000 for the repairs and maintenance of the D8 and D7 dozer to help perform critical operations at the landfill. So if this is not approved, the department would have to rent two dozers to maintain operations, and it would significantly increase their cost. So we're requesting that we can do these repairs. Okay, so the next request is for the growth mitigation fund. The request is to increase appropriations by 976,728. And this is to finalize the reimbursement agreement for the Betaravia Park LLC agreement. Funding for this would come from the traffic mitigation fund, uh, traffic mitigation fee revenue that's deposited in the growth mitigation fund. So the city council had entered into an agreement, resolution 202539, and this would, um, meet the requirements of that. The next request is an increase of appropriations of $2,101,905 coming from the transit fund to purchase five buses. This would be an increase in appropriations, and the purchase is supported by state and The next request is, uh, modification of funds to support the sports complex project. And so when the project was originally adopted, it was adopted using Quimby Act subdivision in Lou funds. The fund is lower and doesn't have enough to support this, so we're requesting today to reduce the appropriation of 1,280,000 from the Quimby Act subdivision in Lou fund and replace that instead with the same amount, 1,280,000, with growth mitigation fund to support the sports complex project.
Question, uh, what is specifically this, um, this 1.280 million dollars, uh, supported? Is the construction, is, is the construction right?
Yes, the project just kicked off in construction, and so these funds would go to support those costs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next amendment is an increase allocation of one lead customer service technician for the utilities department. This position was actually approved in fiscal year 2324, but it was unfunded at the time. It had to go through a human resources process to, um, do the job specs and, and get that all organized. And so that's been done, and the department's ready to hire. So we're requesting that you allocate the funding for that position for the lead customer service technician to support the utilities department. And that request is for $115,000. Another request, increase in appropriations of, from various places, and this is to support the enterprise resource planning system, the Workday system. And it's to support some of the configurations within that system. So the request is to increase appropriations by 12,800 from the water fund, 21,710 from the wastewater fund, 40,700 from the solid waste collection fund, and 21,710 in the solid waste disposal fund for those costs associated with those system changes. And those are the updates that are presented to you. I would request that you receive and file the report for the quarter three ending in March 31st, 2025, and adopt the resolution with these amended amendments presented today.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any questions from the council? Oh, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Oh, yeah, a motion.
Okay. Have a second?
Oh, I don't, I didn't make the motion.
Oh, you didn't?
No, no. I asked if we were going to the motion.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
Okay.
But I can put it.
You will?
I'll put it.
Motion?
I already said it.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Actually, my motion, uh, I would like to modify just one item that I saw, that it's regarding the, the new position that it's requested.
But this is only to receive and file, right? Is it both items that were, that you moved?
We're going to receive and file, and we're going to adopt a resolution.
That's just receive and file?
I don't know. What are you making a motion for?
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm, I don't feel comfortable if these approving this means that we add a new position. I think it's, uh, right now, I don't see that it's a good idea to start bringing or, you know, with their financial situation at the city to bring, to start hiring more and more people. So that's just one of my concerns, that, uh, where do we fall, uh, and if it's needed?
I believe that position is under the.
Utilities.
It's utilities, right?
Mr. Springer?
Okay. That's what I thought.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to provide some clarification. Um, if the position that you're referring to is the, uh, lead customer service technician, that is, um, a position that would be completely funded by the water fund. It would not have an impact on the general fund, um, which is the subject of, of the budget shortfall. So, um, also importantly, the city council essentially authorized the position with the budget and through, um, technical red tape, um, simply waiting on getting the job spec finished and then the, the salary range, this is finishing up the job with what was approved in the budget last year. So, um, that is why we were comfortable coming forward with this request on a quarterly because we felt it was something that the council had already authorized, and it was also not any sort of impact on the general fund. So I would appreciate your support on that this evening.
Yeah, no, and that's, uh, you know, for the last, uh, last couple of presentation, and particularly the financial, I mean, uh, the budget, actually, I, uh, I did not, I voted against it. And my concern is always the, the financial portion of it. But thank you for your clarification that, uh, it's going to be following into, it's not coming from the general fund. So, and then, uh, I'll remove my concern with that and I'll move to, to approve, to file, to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
And we got the second? Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, Madam Clerk, can you please tell the roll?
Mayor Protem Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we'll consider the proposal to name a city park in honor of James Glines to be delivered by Director of Recreation and Parks Alex Posada.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers again, happy to be here, especially with this item. Uh, for those of you that, uh, knew Jim and his contributions to the community, it's an honor for me to bring this to you. The Recreation and Parks Commission considered adding, uh, Jim's name to our list of people to name parks after. We're bringing this item to you. I could go over his history for the record, you know, longtime Santa Maria and longtime businessman, a philanthropist. You would always see him at Alex's events and at the rodeo and the parade, donating his time barbecuing and auctioning for nonprofits in the community. He did that, you know, his entire lifetime, uh, here in Santa Maria. So the park commission went ahead and made a recommendation that the council consider, uh, naming a facility in Jim's honor. And we provided a list of potential sites that are currently, I won't say nameless, but they have not been dedicated to any particular person. Uh, I will add that at the Rec and Parks Commission meeting, we had a number of members of the public come and present, uh, their request, and, uh, very emotional, very supportive of Jim's name, and, uh, you know, we, we echo those comments.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I was informed that, uh, there was a specific, uh, park or was a facility within the city that, uh, family members were more, uh, inclined to or were advocating for.
Correct. So the, uh, it's my understanding, the, the group that came and spoke at the commission, that there was interest in naming the, um, the site at the Enos Bradley Square facility in Jim's name. A little bit of complication there in that we already have the Smith Enos Historic House on the site, the Santa Maria Japanese Community Center on the site. And, uh, in my humble opinion, uh, adding another name to the site just kind of waters down the impact. I'll give you an example. How many of you can tell me where Alice Treff's Park is? That's the Alwin Muscle Senior Center. We only know it as the Alwin Muscle Senior Center, but it is Alice Treff's Park. So, you know, again, I, I understand the, the tie that they would like to make, but certainly, again, I don't want to dilute the, uh, Jim's memory in a site where it could be easily lost with two other facilities there. But that's up to you, uh, certainly something to consider.
Do we, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and something that I, I didn't, I didn't see on the list that you guys sent was the Rorri Park.
I'm sorry?
The Rorri Park.
Yes.
And I know that, I mean, he, he was all about it, and I know he's a huge, uh, I don't know, may, I mean, there's a kiosk or, I don't know, there's actually a barbecue place on the, that sometimes the Rotarians, we, we had had meetings and, and, you know, he loves barbecue and, and bringing people together. I think that's a, that's something I really admire of him. He was just all about bringing people and caring about people. So, you know, it's, it's, that's one thing that I came to my mind actually was reach out regarding doing something in that park that, um, and particularly that facility that might be a good, uh, you know, symbolic, uh, that would be a good symbolic portion of his heritage.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you, Councilmember Escobedo. There are, um, there are areas, the Dr. Carty Playground is there, uh, there's other areas that Rotary has approached us with naming. Uh, there is an agreement with Rotary, uh, the Rotary Foundation for that park, and I, it's been quite a while. I'm not sure I remember all the terms and conditions, but certainly something we can talk to them about, but I believe that they retain, uh, naming rights for some of the improvements, you know, like the gazebo or the picnic area. So we do have a little bit of a conflict for that. But again, Rotary might be interested in, in doing something like that.
I'll, I'll prefer that.
So Mr. Posade, um, I get, I guess there's a little confusion in, in the people that came to the meeting at the Parks Commission. Do we have to be specific about this tonight, or can we say we'll put?
We, you can certainly ask that we have some more time and that we name, you know, bring back some suggestions for names, and we can work with the, we can work with the group, we can work with the family, we can talk to Rotary about what they, they might want to do.
Okay. That, I don't know how anyone else feels, but that would be pretty much my feeling too, rather than do something.
And can you repeat the area that you mentioned about the Elks? Is it in the Elks area that, no, was what the, by the Japanese, well, the Enos Ranch, well, the Enos complex, right?
So it would be the seven, we would basically dedicate the seven acre site, the grounds.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So it could be something like the historic Smith-Enos House at Jim Glines Park.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, some time.
Okay.
So I think one of the, one of the alternatives is to not the name of the park at this time, and defer the decision to a future date, is that, that's an alternative that we can work with on.
Okay.
I move.
You move that? Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in a second, that we move this to a further discussion for a further Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye.
The final regular business item will be a consideration of proposed amendments to the previously adopted mid-cycle city budget. The presentation will be delivered by Finance Director Rebecca Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to update you with a proposed amended fiscal year 2526 budget. Looking at the recommendation, we're going to present to you today and then ask you to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year 2526 mid-cycle city budget and delegate the city manager to implement the same. Looking at what's happened, in February of 2023, the city council set its goals. In March of 2024, the city council also held a workshop and set its citywide priorities. In June of 2024, the city council adopted a two-year biennial budget that consisted of fiscal year 2425 and fiscal year 2526. And we're here today to present updates to that fiscal year 2526 budget, so we're over in the right side of the arrow. Doing a recap on the citywide goals, we have a goal of long-term financial sustainability, that's long-term financial planning and sustaining services to the community, community quality of life, providing for things like public safety and youth programs, planning and infrastructure includes a long-range planning and maintaining our facilities and streets, organizational wellbeing, setting a clear mission and vision, valued services, and fiduciary responsibility. A review of council priorities includes a new approach to economic development, providing youth opportunities, providing public safety resources, and establishing a staffing plan. Okay, so now we'll take a look at the adopted biennial budget. On June 18th, the two-year budgets were adopted. Fiscal year 2425 was adopted as a balanced budget, and it used short-term strategies, the use of one-time reserves from general fund, Measure U, and from the local economic augmentation fund, or we call it LEAF, to balance that budget. At the time, fiscal year 2526 was adopted as an unbalanced budget due to the budget depletion of the general fund and Measure U reserves in fiscal year 2425. At the time, city council directed staff to return with long-term budget strategy recommendations to close that ongoing budget deficit and avoid relying on one-time funds to, for that. So a snapshot of the adopted budgets for Measure U and the general fund. The general fund is on the left side of the chart, and Measure U is on the right side of the chart. So for fiscal year 2425, for the general fund, the expenses exceeded the revenues. So additional reserves were used to balance the budget. So you can see there that the expenditures were 108.7, the revenues were 91.8, so it relied on the fund balance and additional reserves to balance that budget that year. The fiscal year 2526, that's the second column, you can see there that it was adopted with expenses exceeding revenues, and so it was adopted as unbalanced at $15.6 million. On the right side is Measure U, fiscal year 2425 in the third column. The expenses, again, were higher than the revenues, so you can see the expenditures were $31.1 million, revenues were $26.7 million. So it did rely on the fund balance of 4.4 to balance that budget year. Looking forward at fiscal year 2526 for Measure U, you can see that there was $31.4 million in expenses, 26.8 in revenue, and there was no fund balance to rely on, so we did show a gap of $4.6 million there. In July of 2024, the city initiated a budget balancing exercise. At the time, departments worked together with budget staff, and they identified $16.7 million, which was 14% across the board in general fund appropriations for reductions. The city departments analyzed the impacts to their operations and to services. They also explored revenue options, and a summary of findings was brought back to council at the October 1, 2024 meeting. Identified there were tier-one reductions that had a moderate impact to operations, tier-two reductions that had significant impacts to non-public safety services, resulting in $4.3 million in ongoing reductions. Tier-three impacts had significant impacts to services, including public safety, but that resulted in $10.5 million in ongoing reductions. At the time, those reductions were put on hold, and the city manager placed into effect a hiring chill, with the exception of public safety departments. This chart represents the roll-up of all the citywide funds. Totalling over to the right column, this is the proposed amended budget. So we have $407.8 million in expenses allocated to all the funds. And so what we show here is the, the funds are expected to grow in the fund balance. So if you look at the beginning fund balances, you can see they're expected to grow as a result of savings throughout the funds. However, if you look over at the right-hand column, the net of all the funds, they will use their balance, and the balance will shrink from $288,000 down to $218,000. So they are using that balance to roll forward by $70,000. This is the distribution of that $407,000, $7 million by departments. So you can see here, it's all spread out. Looking at this, we have, the enterprise fund represents 40% of the budget at $163.8 million. After that is the general fund, represents 28% of the budget at $114.9 million. Internal service funds, which are our equipment funds, liability, workers' comp, unemployment insurance, telephone, that represents 10% of the budget, or $41.3 million. And then after that, Measure U is the next one in line at 32.7, 32.7 million, or 8% of the budget. Now we'll focus on the general fund and Measure U roll-up. So this is the roll-up of both funds. The fiscal year 2425 was balanced, and fiscal year 2526 was unbalanced by $20.2 million at the time of adoption. So looking at column three, expenditures exceeded revenues, therefore the use of fund balance and canceled reserves were required to balance in the general fund. So these are the estimates for fiscal year 24, our current year. And so we are showing that our expenditures will exceed our revenues, and so we're relying on our fund balance and additional reserves to balance the budget. At the bottom, the 1.3 million, that is from Measure U. Measure U is coming within balance, and it is rolling forward $1.3 million to be used in fiscal year 2526.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Is that for, coming from the Measure U funds, right?
It's from the Measure U funds, and when we looked at the actual expenditures and estimates for this current year, we're showing a savings of $1.3 million. So we'll roll that forward for next year. So if you look at the right-hand column for the roll-up of both funds, what's proposed, we're rolling forward that savings of 1.3, but our expenditures at 147.6 exceed our revenues of 121.1. So right now, we're showing a, a gap of $25.1 million. Okay, fund balance is a really important piece of the budget. The fund balance represents your current year savings. So you analyze your expenses, you analyze your revenues, and whatever's left over is your unassigned fund balance. And we use that to roll forward, and it's a, it's a critical piece to fund the next year of the budget. So looking at, this is, represents the fiscal year 2425 year-end estimates for general fund and for Measure U. So general fund is on the left and Measure U on the right. So looking at general fund, we budgeted 8.5 as our beginning fund balance in 2425, that's column one. Because the expenditures were higher than the revenues, it required us to budget 8.3 in the LEAF reserves in order to balance the budget.
Is, I'm sorry.
Yep.
The canceled reserves?
Yes.
Those are the transfers, right?
They are basically your savings account.
Right.
It's your savings account, and we're using our savings account to fund our operations.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Okay, so switching to column two, now we're looking at our estimates for this current year. We had more savings. Instead of 8.5, we grew our savings, and we're estimating to grow those to $10 million. Expenditures are less at 1.5.3, 105.3 million. Revenues are a little less, 91.6 million. And so we are requiring less reserves to balance the budget, so that's a positive, more positive scenario than what was budgeted. Looking at Measure U on the right-hand side, we budgeted $4.4 million as our beginning fund balance. We had balanced budget in Measure U, so we didn't require the use of reserves, but we did rely on that fund balance in fiscal year 2425. Looking at the estimates, all the way over to the right, are, we did have more savings. They grew significantly, actually, at 12.2 million compared to the 4.4. We had expenditures exceeding revenues, so with use of that fund balance, we did have a savings at the end of 1.3 million. Any questions on that?
Any questions from the council?
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, so now, looking at revenues, we prepared, so revenue estimates were prepared in February of 2025. Staff went back and looked at our historical trends of revenues, they looked at prior year data, any anticipated adjustments that needed to occur, and they estimated the revenues for the full year. And those are all shown in detail in attachment B in your packet. So looking here, revenues have grown slightly. In the third column, you can see the variance by $796,000. So we're pretty, pretty, almost pretty flat in our revenues. We're experiencing a 1.4 million reduction in sales tax I discussed earlier, and transient occupancy taxes by 1.9, those together, $1.4 million. But as I discussed earlier in the quarter three update, we were trending higher in property tax by 1.9, so that should make up for those losses. And we also do estimate a reduction in our charges for services based on decreased zoning fees aligning with the actual collections. Okay, so those are our revenues. Now we'll look at our expenditures for general fund, including Measure U. So looking at the adopted budget in column one, $140.5 million. And the proposed amended budget, we're looking to increase those at 147.6 million, and that is a $7.0 million increase. 6.9 million of that increase is related to salary and benefits costs since we adopted the budget, as well as workers' compensation and general liability increases. We are recommending $129,000 in the supplemental budget request, and I'll cover those later in the presentation. Also, subsequent to the posting of the agenda, there was a request that came in for $25,000 for the homeless encampment cleanup project that was discussed earlier during the quarter three update. We're looking to fund those costs through September. So we would add that to these numbers as a request. The expenses, you can find further detailed in attachment three in your, C in your packet. This shows the $7 million increase in expenses by department for the general fund and Measure U. Those expenses I covered on the previous slide are spread throughout the general fund and Measure U departments. So you can see in the, over this, the increase of $7 million, all the way to the right-hand column, and how that is all spread through the departments. Looking at our workforce, the full-time equivalent, the count of our positions reflects those changes in positions implemented by the city manager and through our city council actions from the time of the adopted budgets. When the, when the budget was adopted, we had 732.4 positions, or full-time equivalent positions, and at this time, we're requesting 741.6. That's an amendment of 9.2 positions. Looking at that in further detail, this is included in your packet as well. The 9.5, 9.2 positions are spread throughout the departments. So in Recreation and Parks, we have a six, six-position increase that was approved during the quarter one report. We have four additional positions in utilities. This is offset by one part-time position. That's also included in there. And part of the supplemental budget requests, we have five positions in Public Works moving to the Transit Division or department. With this change, it's recommended to evaluate the positions for approval by the city manager. So we do show it moving from the Public Works to the Transit Division, and that, we'll evaluate that, the changes with that. We have three positions in utilities, an administrative leader, a regulatory compliance manager, and a lead account clerk request, and point two, maintenance worker one to maintenance worker two. So we're requesting to increase the regulatory compliance specialist with that by point two, to make it a full-time. So that brings the head count up to 741.60 full-time equivalent positions. If you look at it by people in the positions, so we have some that are allocated at not a full-time, 1.0, maybe it's a point half-time or something like that. If you look at all the people in those positions, we have 700 If you look at all the people in those positions, we have 752 people working for the city. So, I wanted to show you a summary of the local economic augmentation fund, or LEAF. This is our reserve fund made up of one-time general fund operating surplus. So, that would be revenues that exceed the expenditures that are set aside in a budget year. So, the intent is to use this as gap financing mechanism during downturns in the local economy. There was an older policy related to this fund. There was no cap on how much it would grow. The amount of general fund operating surplus at the time in the old policy, so that's the revenues over the expenditures, they were reserved for, a third was going to be transferred. So, if anything came in higher, a third would be transferred to the pension liability fund, a third would be transferred to the capital project fund, and then a third would go to LEAF. There was a new policy that was implemented, and the amount reserved in LEAF now is limited to 5% of the general fund and Measure U operating appropriations, the savings. Actually, 5% of the total appropriations. So, and once it reaches that cap, then we will stop setting aside in that fund. So, looking at the chart, the green line is how much revenue over expenses has contributed to LEAF, so how much we put away in savings. There is an anomaly there in fiscal year 21, 22. That was American Rescue Plan Act funds of 10 million dollars. It was reported as revenue loss for the city, and it was set aside in the LEAF reserve. Looking at the blue bar and the yellow, that was in fiscal year 23, 24. We had funds in there, so the decision was made to transfer out 6.8 million to the capital fund and 2.1 million to the general fund operations. And then, at year-end, we did end up putting a small amount back. At the end of fiscal year 23, 24, the balance in LEAF was 23.1 million dollars. For fiscal year 24, 25, we're forecasting the balance will be 22.7 million dollars. But, in fiscal year 25, 26, we're projecting to use it all to balance the budget. Now, I'm going to transition to the supplemental budget requests. This was a process at the beginning of the year where departments could reassess their operations and submit requests for the upcoming budget year. It had been over a year since the budget was adopted, and sometimes things change. We received 61 new requests, and in the packet today, we're recommending 46 of those. Those are all outlined in attachment G in your packet. Most, so there's a number of requests, some various different funding sources. So, I'll talk about the general fund requests. So, for general fund and Measure U, those requests, most of them were put on hold at this time, with the exception of, a few of them, with the exception of things that were required to happen. So, the annual increase related to the animal services agreement, that's recommended at $107,000. A utility increase for fire at $57,000. The CAL ID fingerprint machine, the maintenance costs on that, we're recommending to support the amendment. And also, the homeless encampment cleanup of $25,000. There were a number of requests related to position changes and reclassifications of positions. We're recommending to put those on hold, and they will be further evaluated. And in coordination with that, we have a classification and compensation study that is actively being worked on, and so those may have to coincide with that study. Most of the other requests outside the general fund and Measure U are recommended to move forward, with the exception that any position changes shall be reviewed first at the discretion of the city manager. Okay. So, taking a look at those requests by department, we have 10 million, 10.8 million dollars of ongoing costs and 3.4 million in one-time costs. I'll outline a few of these, some of the big ones. So, we have 1.99 million budgetary increases for the general liability insurance fund. 4.1 million is for workers' compensation. And 3.4 million dollars is for the business and communication assets.
That's the equipment fund or which one's that one?
That is correct. Yeah. On the internal service funds. Okay. So, I talked about the position changes and outside, you know, some of those are recommended, but it's going to be at the evaluation of the city manager. And those as well, we'll have to see if they line up with that class and comp study. So, we'll evaluate that before they move forward. So, along with the supplemental budget requests, there was also a process related to the capital maintenance and equipment projects. So, at the same time that, earlier in the year, departments were allowed to submit for capital maintenance and equipment projects, and there was a process of evaluation. All the details of those projects are in attachment H. Those were reviewed by Public Works, the city manager's office, and the Department of Finance. And they are all new projects. So, looking here, there's a list here from the water and wastewater and solid waste fund, different upgrades and projects. Looking at public ways and facilities, there's re-roofing, there's heating, ventilation, police department fleet, opticon projects. So, these capital projects are recommended to move forward upon, so all of them, they're all recommended to move forward upon evaluation and approval by the city manager. So, this is another thing that we are going to be cautious with. We want to take a look at the projects because of the budget deficit and ensure that it's the appropriate time or perhaps it can be put on pause. So, we want to take a deep dive and look at those as well. You can see here, here's additional projects related to projects out in the community. So, again, those will be evaluated before they move forward. Okay. So, now, we're asking for these policy recommendations. So, the proposed fiscal year 25, 26 general fund appropriations, we discussed a 7 million dollar increase in appropriations. Revenues are forecasted to fall short of operational and capital expenses by 26.4 million dollars. Therefore, we will have a draw on the, on that fund balance, the 1.3 million dollars in Measure U, and that brings the gap down a little bit to 25.1 million dollars to close it. So, we're asking that, for the cancellation, so we're asking again for the savings to balance the budget at this time of general fund reserves for the, what it'll include is the unfunded liability pension payment of 5.9 million plus that $25,000 for homeless encampment cleanup, and also canceling the remainder of the balance of the LEAF reserve of 22.7 million. So, of that, 14.4, we're requesting to go to the general fund, 4.8 to balance the Measure U fund, and 3.5 to balance the capital fund, the general fund capital projects fund. I wanted to show you the reserve accounts and what's going to be remaining, so we'll take a look at that. So, walking through this slide, this is the general fund. So, looking at the remaining of the reserve balance, we started with, if you look at that top chart, fiscal year 24, 25, general fund going from 49.3 million to a balance of 36 million dollars, ending in 24, 25. At the bottom, we show the proposed 25, 26 budget. And so, we're looking to cancel additional reserves of the unfunded liability pension payment in the amount of 5.9 million. So, thereby, it will leave 4 million in that reserve account for the unfunded pension benefits you can see there. So, that'll bring it from 36 down to remaining 30.1 million dollars. Looking at Measure U fund, for fiscal year 24, 25, the Measure U fund is going from 12.2 million to a balance of 1.3. And for 25, 26, going from 1.3 to a balance of zero. The proposed mid-year cycle will cancel that balance and use that balance of the 1.3 million, as we discussed. Looking at the LEAF fund and the remaining balances there, you can see in fiscal year 24, 25, we had an ending balance of 22.7 million, and that we will be using that in fiscal year 25, 26 to balance. Okay, so this slide has a lot of words, but I want to go through this with you. Next steps. So, the finance department, we are energized and we're ready to embark on a rebalancing initiative and try to tackle this structural deficit. So, I'll go through each one of these items. We want to work with all city departments, the city manager, everybody in this room. We want to work together and with your council to do that. So, what that will entail, we want to go through and work with the departments to revisit the year-end estimates. So, those estimates were prepared in February. We want to relook at them and see if they grow and see if we have additional savings. With that, we want to look at a vacancy position evaluation. We know that, we know, we had a hearing, I believe it was the last city council meeting, we had a hearing on the vacancies, and we do have long-term persistent vacancies on the books that we want to look at and evaluate. Departmental budget reevaluation. So, I'm new here. I want to sit down with every department and go through their expenses, their revenues, learn about their budgets, see if there's any opportunities within the budgets, and talk and work with the departments on that, and the budget team's ready to assist with that. Financial budget policy review. There are reserve policies, there's financial policies. We want to take a relook at all of those, see where we're meeting or lacking, and bring that back to the council for review and how we're meeting and what the plan is to move forward with those. Review capital at LEAF project expenses, I talked about that. Right now, we're, with this request, we're amending the budget to put some funding there. However, we're proceeding with extreme caution on how we're going to, if, how and when we're going to do those projects. Revenue generation opportunity evaluation, we want to look at anywhere from small to big initiatives. We want to take a look at that and see if there's anything we can do there. Developing short and long-term rebalancing initiative strategies. We know that our reserves are going down, and when we end the year, we hope they'll come up and that we won't have to draw as much. But, so that'll help us determine how long will this restructuring plan take and how will we use those reserves to help us close the gap and then start building. We also would like to establish a city council ad hoc committee for this initiative. So, we will come back at the next city council meeting and request that two of your council members sit on an ad hoc committee so we can work with you closely. It's a big task and we need to work together, so that's what we would request. And we plan to kick this off, work through it through the summer, and then bring back some recommendations in the fall. So, the, I want to thank Mr. Kirkwood for being here, also Divine Mello, who's part of the budget team. We're ready to get going and see if we can make a dent on this structural deficit. So, with that, where's the clicker? I would ask that you adopt a resolution approving the amendments discussed for the fiscal year 25, 26 mid-cycle budget and delegating the city manager to implement the same.
Thank you very much, Ms. Campbell. Are there any questions from the council?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Soder.
On page three of the report, I noticed that, that it stated that there was a number reported to city council at a meeting, but that was in fact, that that wasn't actual. So, can staff clarify why the 6.5 million in operating reductions were reported if only 3.7 million in vacancy savings were only implemented? Like, how did we arrive at the 6.5 million that was given to council at that meeting?
Yeah, I don't know what happened there. I wasn't here at that time. I was told that it was reported to council that those tier one and two impacts were implemented, but we discovered that they were not and that they had been put on hold. So, we didn't realize that savings. We didn't, we didn't realize it, so. But, this hiring chill was put into effect at that time.
Right. It was a hiring chill, but it sounds like the numbers were not after, they were off.
It was off.
So, how can we avoid that from happening in the future?
We, we need to move forward.
Yeah.
We need to move forward and, you know, make some tough decisions. We need to work together and tackle it and not pause. We need to move forward and take action.
My, my other question is around just some costs that are, I would say, out of our control, some of our responsibilities. I think that that comes down to, like, our CALPERS contributions, and I noticed that those were significantly, well, I don't know, I don't know if significantly is the right word, but we, we, we under-budgeted what our contribution to CALPERS was going to be. And so, not just with CALPERS, but also with, like, our liability, our general liability costs, for instance. And so, like, what assumptions did we make at that point for the original budget? Like, what assumptions did we make to estimate, okay, this is how much we expect to pay in terms of our contributions, whether it's for liability, workers, whatever, COPERS? And how can we make sure that we get it a little bit closer to the target moving forward? Like, can we do five-year projections? Like, what drives that? I mean, I know a lot of it is market, but.
Yes, we need to do a good job of projections.
With respect to work comp and liability, my office took over that, those positions. And we dramatically revisited the assumptions that had been made, which is why it's significantly higher this year. We've also tried to build in a 10% on top of so that we can, again, like LEAF, build a fund that we can utilize in lean times. The other problem always is, we get the budget out correctly in May or June, but we actually don't get the premium quotes until the last week of June. So, we could put in what we believe it to be and then get hit. And candidly, because of fires and other issues, insurance has been increasing at a 30 to 50% rate yearly, year over year. So, but part of it is we're trying to build in some cushion, which had not been built in by previous administrations.
A follow-up to that, are there specific departments that you've noticed or teams that contribute more to that liability expense?
We're revisiting all of that and the assumptions on how those funds are built and paid. So, I don't want to answer that at this time because we're still in the investigation standpoint, but we do know that there are some elements that are larger than others, and we're revisiting how it's funded by each department. What we're looking at, and Rebecca's been very helpful, is creating a fund level instead of a department-by-department level. So, it becomes an expense of the city. So it becomes an expense of the city instead of an individualized expense, with the exception of those enterprise funds that are not funded by General Fund or Measure U.
And that way, you can also figure out what the best approach for mitigation would be.
Exactly.
Right, right.
And then Mr. Watson also, wasn't on the CalPERS, their investments were not where they thought they were going to be by a large, by a large margin.
Again, with CalPERS, that's always a function of payroll. And so, we always have a higher impact, whatever the state does poorly.
And I would add to that, in recent years, they lowered the discount rate.
Right.
And they, you know, they smoothed it in over three years. But it was hard for agencies to absorb that cost. And so, you know, we're always paying attention to that. Are they going to need to do it again? Are they making their investments? One thing I wanted to address, Councilmember Soto. We recently started doing forecasting, but we need to get better at it. And so what that means is, we need to do, we need to look at, what is our status quo? And then we need to apply scenarios to it. You know, what would a 2% increase be? What would it be a 1% CPI? What would be a reduction in the growth of our revenues? So we, you know, we need to do a better job of it. I would agree with that. I also wanted to address, I'm sorry I didn't do this earlier, but how did we get here? You know, how did we get here to this situation? So, we talked about our revenues, they're pretty static and our costs have gone up. So our revenues are just not keeping up with our expenses. And it's nobody's fault, it's, it's just, you know, that's what's happening on that one. The Measure U forecast, it's reached its peak. So we have to take a look at that and see, how are we going to either absorb those costs somewhere and offset it? Or, you know, we're just seeing less growth. Inflation, inflation, we've seen in recent years, it's grown, it's grown, it's starting to level out. We talked about the workers' comp, general liability, the recent increases in salaries and benefits. So it's not just the salaries, it pushes all the benefits up that go with that. And so, you know, we want to pay our employees, they're the most valuable resource to do our services, but it does put pressure on the budget. And then the supplemental budget requests, there's a cost to that. And then when we add, it puts pressure on the budget. So, you know, we've got to do some financial planning with that. And then I know this wasn't a direct impact to this problem because we did set aside the American Rescue Plan Act funds, but that's up for further review. Were there any costs that got absorbed? And so did we add things that were ongoing costs? So that will be evaluated and we'll take a look at that. And then things are settling out from the American Rescue Plan Act. So it's the subtle effect that's happening on that. So that's, you know, in talking about all those things, we are not unique. It's going on up and down the state with governmental agencies. A lot of agencies are in this scenario, they're seeing large deficits and they're having to take action on them. So I would just add that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for that. My question now goes back to the LEAF. And just, I need some clarification. Are we are draw dropped this year? Is that, explain to me again, was that due to better-than-expected revenue, under expenditures, reallocations?
We had additional savings in the budget. We spent less and, you know, than, we spent less. And so, we need less to balance.
But then next year, we're looking at fully depleting it?
Yes, we are. Because we're rebudgeting everything at full budget costs and we need to balance that.
But are we taking money out of the pension reserve?
We are. We, we need that in addition to the LEAF.
And it, oh, for 20, for next fiscal year?
For next fiscal year, correct.
So what implications will that have if we can't fund our, if we don't have money for our funded liabilities?
That's a problem. We need to come up with a plan to resolve the structural deficit. And then we need to look beyond that and see, look at our policies and see where our funds need to be and work towards that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. According to, in the presentation, it was mentioned that as of today, the adopted budget, we face 20, 20, a little bit more than 22, 20.2 million dollars in deficit.
It's 25.1.
25, no, the adopted one, but the recommendation is the 25.1.
Correct, yes, that is correct. Yeah, thank you.
And, well, I know that you were, you were not, when all this happened and the same with Dave. And it's a tough, it's a tough scenario. And I've been saying that many times for many years, as of today. And, you know, it's, your presentation, one of our first motions was to put another 1.3 million dollars into that, that deficit. So, I don't feel comfortable with the, with this budget. I have been voting against them for a long time. I'm planning on voting now on this one, but I want to, you know, on the record, I put some faith, I put faith on you guys because I know that it has been a lot of changes and a lot of things going around. Dave and Ms. Campbell, well Rebecca, you guys, I have, I have my hopes and District 1 has their hopes that you guys are going to be looking deep into how we can fix this up so we don't get back to these. Because, you know, it's kind of like, everything was good and suddenly, and then we didn't get a, for many months, maybe years, we didn't get an exact number of where we were. And that was like, okay, it was 6, then 18, then it went to 20. So I'm glad that you guys are finally looking deeper and seeing where we are. So, I have, you know, I'm looking forward for the presentation in fall and hopefully feel more comfortable with, with what you guys bring. And because, you know, plans to do things, it has been brought before. Well, the idea of having that, but as you mentioned, there has not been an, an actual, having really done it. It hasn't been tangible or didn't really happen. So I'm hopeful to see a good plan. So that's, that's something I'm, I would like to express. My voting now in this, for this one is just from where we come from. But all at the same time, I have an expectation, hopefully we, you guys can, and what I get from this presentation, you guys are really getting into that. So that's, that's some hope from, from me and from District 1. Thank you.
Councilmember Escobedo, if you're saying that you don't feel comfortable voting with the amendment budget, what is it that you are proposing that we do? What would make you feel comfortable voting for the budget, for the amendment? What, what, what parts of the budget would you suggest changing?
Well, I don't feel comfortable voting for any budget with a deficit and use of LEAF funds. And when that also is added to, we spending money that we don't have. So adding those up, it just, I mean, if I was seeing that we actually are cutting and doing the plans, I would say, okay, let's get, let's, I would be, okay, let's do it. Maybe the future next budget might be some deficit, but if I see that actually that deficit is going down and actually things are being done, then I say, okay, let's, let's, let's start working on that. Let's, I'll be happy to support it. But as of today, with where we come from and where we are, I don't, I just, at this point, I don't feel comfortable with that.
So, if you were out of a job tomorrow and you have bills to pay today, you wouldn't use your savings account to pay those bills for today?
Well, we're not talking about Carlos, we're talking about the people's money.
Well, it's, I'm asking because we are balancing the budget with reserves. It's not, I, I just want to make it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to make it clear to the residents that we are approving a balanced budget with reserves being utilized.
That is correct.
Because I think the statement that you just made is, is not correct. And so I just wanted, I just want to make sure to correct that.
No, I dissent with your, with your comment, Councilmember Soto. We spent, as I said, 1.3 million dollars a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, that's, we're using money that will be, we increased something that we will not go back. So now we're using savings to pay something that is constant. I see it as, we keep paying a credit card with another credit card and that's sustainable. So that's.
I just wanted to correct the comment that we're, that we were voting on unbalanced budget.
It's, it's a deficit budget. And I do not agree and I do not accept any correction on my comments.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank you for that presentation. It was outstanding. And I think, either way we go, we have to come to an agreement to get this balanced, okay? We're not going to fix things overnight, but, I mean, you brought an outstanding presentation showing us where we're at. Yeah, we have to take money from here to pay here, but at the end, it will all work. And as a city, this is what happens. This isn't the only city that is going through this. But we have to realize and we have to come together, we have to be able to get this budget in a place. And thank God you're here to help us get this budget in a place. And I really believe we can get that deficit down in time. But it's going to take for us to unite as council and to be able to believe in what you're doing here. You're new. I'm new on council, but I'm, and I studied the budget, budget. But I really think that we need to move forward and finish this, finish this. Or we're going to be still in limbo like we were. When I joined council, it was in limbo, right? We didn't have direction. Now we have direction. So I appreciate that, Rebecca, from you and the presentation that you did. And I know it's not easy, but I'm grateful for where you're trying to take our city right now. And I believe we'll get out of there. I really believe we can get out of this.
And if I may make another comment. I also saw, and again, correct me if I misunderstood the report, that about 49% of expenditures go towards salaries, benefits?
Yeah.
It's a significant portion. And so when we're talking about
It's the highest cost.
Yeah, it's the highest cost. And so when we're talking about reducing costs, we also need to be cognizant that reducing costs
Yes.
with, with that, how we move forward with that. And I see that part of the recommendation in terms of next steps is forming an ad hoc committee. And so I don't know if there's any thought behind possibly engaging community in that process. I mean, Councilmember Escobedo is consistently talking about, and I agree, about how this is taxpayer money. And so I would suggest, like, why not have, if we're going to have this ad hoc committee made up of council staff, could we invite, like, a member of the community? Or how can we make this process transparent and engaging so that members of the community taxpayers are kept in the loop and are able to have a say on how, how, how things are appropriated in the city of Santa Maria?
Thank you.
You know, we have seen, I can remember when Jason was sitting in that seat or Rick Hayden was sitting there and telling us, we have this structural deficit, it's going to happen. We cannot continue to provide the same services because they're going to keep costing more. And then we have our expenditures, we have our insurance, we have our salaries, our benefits. We go into negotiations and we give increases. All of that goes up. So it's unrealistic to think that we are not going to be in a structural deficit if we keep doing the same thing year after year after year. And, but, we've been, you know, I've, through every council I've been on, we've been warned, it's coming. So it's not like it should be a big surprise. And then, and that is why we set the LEAF aside is so that we could use those for a rainy day besides other, besides other reserves that we have, like in the enterprise funds and different funds we have. We have reserves in those, so.
May I also make an ask that when, as soon as we find that a number that was reported to council is different, how can we communicate that back to council? Outside of these quarterly budget reports? Especially when it's something that, and now I'm like, did we vote on something? You know? Are we making decisions on numbers that may not be what we want them to be?
If we identify something like that, we'll take accountability and identify the error.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak or written comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Escobedo?
No.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Campbell, for your thorough, thorough presentation. So now we will have a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, it's a couple items. What's my first rodeo? It was incredible. My family wants to come back.
It really, it really was?
It really was.
Oh my gosh, okay.
We have a new family reunion trip out every year, it sounds like, for my grandkids and my kids. Upcoming agenda items, we have a landscape maintenance contract award, tourism bargaining to end a report at the June 17 meeting. We're also going to be coming back with the council ad hoc committee recommendations. Or perhaps the council recommend two individuals to start up a budget ad hoc committee with us. The following month, we potentially try to have on the leisure needs assessment and then the appointments to boards, committees, and commissions, and that'll be on the July 1 meeting agenda. I will come back with a report from the police department, take a look at the youth crap on crime information request earlier tonight. And I'd like to add in, in terms of the budget process, Rebecca and I have been having less than a month to work on it. What you got here tonight was basically what was approved in the past, given to you, some adjustments. What we're going to hopefully do over the next three months is come back with basically a brand-new budget, if you will. Look at where is the general fund going? And we're using general fund money for capital projects, if we are a capital project. A high priority, medium priority, low priority. Take a look at that. Take a look at vacant positions. If you look at 52 positions that were vacant, if they're $100,000 a pop, you're looking close to $5 million with benefits there, they also there. So there are ways we can come back and tackle this. Yes, we don't want to come to a structural deficit standpoint, we'd like to have a revenue in and revenue out. We're going to take a look at every little thing out there so that we get to the point where if we do honestly have, through all of our cuts and recommendations, we're still looking $20 million, I think that's the time and place that you reach out and touch the public. We come back, as you know, at the $5 to $10 million frame, we're making good progress and put together a game plan to get everything put together. The department directors here, we've got a great team put together. They know the city inside and out, what's a priority for the city, for the residents, what's a priority for city council. I believe we'll be able to come back with a very good plan over the next three months. We could probably, we can give updates as well as the ad hoc committee meets with city staff. And we'll provide all the, all the information to anybody who wants it and who needs it. Just want to make that clear and just thank you for overall and appreciate the department heads and the reports we had tonight. Thank you.
Okay, we will now go to the oral reports of council members.
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor. Well, I attended the downtown revitalization committee meeting last, last week?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On May 28, I attended the sports complex groundbreaking ceremony.
Ms. Flores?
I attended the car show that we had, and I also went and visited the veterans home with Fred Pratt. I also went to the sports complex event and the Alch rodeo parade.
Was this your first rodeo?
Excuse me?
Was this your first rodeo?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
May 7, I, I attended the career day speaker at McKenzie Junior High, which is in Guadalupe. On the May 8, I attended my LAVCO board meeting. May 9, Fighting Back Samaria Valley Board Meeting. On May 12, I was a speaker at Righetti Government Classes, and then I met with United Way on the, oh, on the May 13, the ribbon cutting for CADA, Youth and Family Center. On May 14, Police Officers Memorial Ceremony at the San Maria PD. And that evening, the Citizens and Student of the Year Awards at Elks Lodge. May 15, SB CAG Board Meeting in the morning, and the SB CAG Measure A Workshop and the APCD Board Meeting in the afternoon. And that evening were the annual FFA Awards. And if you haven't been to an FFA banquet award, you really, really need to go and see how, it's just, these kids are just fabulous. And this was for San Maria High School, and the turnout of the parents and the extended family. On May 16, I was speaker at San Maria High School Avid Classes. And on May 18 through the 20th, I attended International Council of Shopping Centers Conference, where they do a lot in-depth in economic development. And May 22, Hope Village Meeting with Samaria PD in Santa Barbara County. On May 23, did career day speaker at Ariana's Elementary School, and attended the West Coast Customs Dinner Event. And May 24, I attended the West Coast Custom Car Show, and that was cruise night, and our black and white car is, really, everyone just loves it. Get, get a lot of attention for that car. On the Sunday, did the West Coast Custom Car Show Awards. On the 26th, attended the Memorial Day Veterans Ceremony at the, Ceremony at the San Maria Cemetery. And on the 28th, the new sports complex groundbreaking. And I think here is an example of, over the years, and I don't know how many years it's taken, but we have set money aside, we got money from the, a million from the federal government, we got a million from the county, and saved the money until we were able to do the sports complex. And also the land, we just don't have a lot of land within the city limits of San Maria. Attended Marion Foundation Board Meeting, and I attended the Elks rodeo a couple of times, went to the VIP reception, and we did the parade. It's always great to see all the people, and especially the little kids that, sitting down the parade route. And today, went to the, the law enforcement torch run that was held here. And here is a good example of how our law enforcement gets together doing something that's really, really positive and supportive of our community. But we had police officers from Guadalupe, from Lompoc, the sheriff, CHP, and park rangers, and, and sheriff, yeah, sheriff, and who else am I missing?
Alan Hancock.
Oh, that's right, Alan Hancock, yeah. And our own Nate Torterico is the one that puts it all together every year, and I got a new shirt this year. So, anyway, anything else from the council? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.